That looks great.
Okay. So this is an update from recommendations from the Commissioner Jeff Riley for returning to school in the fall of 2022. So welcome back, everybody, to another school year. Our pandemic landscape continues to shift, and we've had some recent updates from CDC, DPH, and DESI regarding the return to school. Following slides highlights some health and safety changes for the upcoming year. Where we've been, just to start, is we've had a comprehensive testing program, including weekly pooled testing, symptomatic testing, and at-home antigen testing. We've had intense contact tracing efforts, physical distancing, universal masking. We've had robust ventilation and cleaning protocols, isolation and quarantine with many, many changes. We've had increased vaccination awareness and access for people, and we did have some classroom closures. What currently remains in place is there's required masking in all health offices, and that follows the DPH guidelines for healthcare facilities. Masking is optional in all other areas of the school building. If individuals are making the decision to continue wearing a mask, they will be respected for their decision. We still have separate areas within the health office if need be. If you remember, we had medical waiting rooms that could potentially be used for someone who is symptomatic, who comes in for testing and just needs to separate before they go home. We will still be doing data tracking with our spreadsheets like we did last year, so we can keep an eye on trends. We will still do symptomatic testing in school. If you remember that we had binax testing and iHealth testing towards the end of the year. This will be for individuals who present with symptoms of COVID-19 during the school day, and we still have ongoing collaboration with the Department of Health and Human Services. We also have in place continued education for respiratory etiquette, handwashing. The Superintendent's Health Advisory Committee will remain in place. Our first meeting will be September 7. That is the boots-on-the-ground daily operations, and of course, personal individual health information, privacy, and protection. At the time of this meeting, I know there was a request for vaccination rates for our schools. Grades 6 to 12, if there's a 90% rate of students having one or more dose, and grades K to 5 is 80% of one or more dose. Unfortunately, I don't have updated data because the Massachusetts Immunization Information System and our electronic medical record system has not worked together. So I hope to have that updated data for the ad hoc meeting on Monday. So these are some of the new DESI DPH guidelines and updates for fall. The Commonwealth is not recommending universal mask requirements or surveillance testing of asymptomatic individuals, contact tracing, or test-to-stay testing in schools. There's no longer a statewide masking mandate in schools with the exception of school health offices. There's no testing requirement for schools. Contact tracing is no longer recommended statewide for K to 12 schools. No asymptomatic person should be excluded from school as a result of exposure, regardless of vaccination status or exposure setting. And as of August 15, all students and staff and childcare, schooling grades K to 12, or participating in out-of-school time in recreational camp settings should follow the updated isolation and exposure guidance issued by DPH, which is in alignment with the recently issued guidance from CDC.
Lisa, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I should have asked you this before you started, but would you like questions as you go along, or would you prefer waiting until the end? I see that member Sophie Cox has raised her hand.
Sure, I can take a question.
Thanks. I'm hoping it's a quick question. It was just on the vaccination rates. You said that you don't have updated information. Does that mean updated information about students who are fully vaccinated? Because what you have--
Fully vaccinated or newly vaccinated or boosted, yeah.
Yeah, because since that information is just one shot, and you know, that's not full vaccination.
Well, one or more, one or more doses. So there are--
Right.
--that have, yeah.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, it's-- We have a rollover every summer with our electronic medical record system, and it just did not connect for me to get that data for you right now.
Sounds good. Yeah, thanks.
DESI is also noting that screening testing, for example, pooled testing and test-to-stay are no longer recommended. DESI and DPH strongly recommend that schools and districts interested in implementing their own testing program during the 2022-22/3 school year limit that program to symptomatic rapid testing. So in preparation for that, beginning in the spring, I obtained surplus of iHealth test kits from the state to have on hand for the beginning of the school year. Part of the requirements for school districts to have a testing program include updated consent forms, which I have updated and have translated. We had to apply for a clear waiver from the state, which has been done. It gives us permission to be a third party to interpret the results. We needed a new standing order from our school's physician, which is also completed. Reporting of tests is going to be different this year. Only positive tests conducted at schools by school staff will be reported to the DPH using a system called Simple Reports. Positive case counts will no longer be reported through the DESI security portal like last year, where people were able to go on and look at each district's weekly data. And we still will have collaboration with our local public health community for vaccine education and access. Some of the updates to the isolation and quarantine. Rapid antigen test, such as a self-test, is preferred to a PCR in most situations. Contact tracing is no longer recommended or required, but schools or programs must continue to work with their local boards of health in case of outbreaks. While masks are not required or recommended in these settings except for school health offices, any individual who wishes to continue to mask, including those who face higher risk from COVID-19, should be supported in that choice. For those who need or choose to mask, masking is never required in the setting while the individual is eating, drinking, sleeping, or outside. All individuals are encouraged to stay up to date with vaccination, as vaccines remain the best way to help protect yourself and others. Quarantine is no longer required nor recommended for children or staff in these settings, regardless of vaccination status or where the exposure occurred. All exposed individuals may continue to attend programming as long as they remain asymptomatic. Those that can mask should until day 10, and it's also recommended that they test on day 6. If any symptoms develop, they're going to be following the guidance for symptomatic individuals. Children and staff who test positive for COVID-19 must isolate for at least five days. If they are asymptomatic or have resolving symptoms, and they have been fever-free without the use of fever-free reducing medicine for 24 hours, they may return to programming after day 5 and should wear high-quality masks through day 10. Symptomatic individuals can remain in their school or program if they have mild symptoms or tested immediately on site, and that test is negative. Best practice would also be encouraging mask-wearing until symptoms are recovered. For symptomatic individuals, DPH also recommends a second test within 48 hours if the initial test was negative. If the symptomatic individual cannot be tested immediately, they should be sent home and then allowed back from the program to the program or school. If their symptoms remain mild and they test negative, however, if we're having in-school symptomatic testing, we have the ability to have immediate testing on site. This is just a review of COVID-19 symptoms. Fever of 100 degrees Fahrenheit or higher, difficulty breathing or shortness of breath, new loss of taste or smell, sore throat when in combination with other symptoms, nausea/vomiting when in combination with other symptoms, headache when in combination with other symptoms, fatigue when in combination with other symptoms, muscle aches or body aches, cough not due to other known cause, such as chronic cough, nasal congestion or runny nose not due to other known causes, such as allergies, when in combination with other symptoms. Just a short visual for you of what it would look like for testing in school. If someone is symptomatic and they receive a negative rapid antigen test for COVID-19 while in school, they may remain in school with mild symptoms. If the symptoms worsen or change, they should be turned to the health office for further guidance. If a rapid antigen test is positive, there will be dismissal from school, and then the individual will be following the guidelines that we just went over for isolation and return to school. So what we have on hand right now, we have iHealth test kits that I noted we got at the end of the school year. We do also have some binax test kits that we've also used. We have about 9,400 individual tests. I did kind of survey a couple of nurses to see what they thought they might have done for symptomatic testing towards the end of the year, and they thought maybe an average of 10. So just as an example, if we, each school did 10 symptomatic tests each week using 60 tests for the six schools, we have many weeks left worth of tests available for in-school testing. Self-test kits will not be sent home as before, and we will be looking at how many we are using and the potential for needing more. That being said, just to give you an idea of the cost of what we're looking at, through the COMBI system that is recommended for the iHealth, there's a couple of different vendors available. But because we have the iHealth, which was supplied by the state at the end of the year, they're $10 per kit. A minimum order is one pallet of 7,560 kits times $10, which is $75,600 for one pallet. Some of the other vendors range from $12 to $14 and higher without a minimum purchase, so that would require further exploration for purchasing. And at this time, we're not purchasing any additional kits. We will use what we have on hand and monitor what we have used. And our consent links for caregivers and staff will be available on the district website soon for signing up for symptomatic testing. And these are the links where all this information came from. If you have any questions, and if not, I thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Lisa, for that presentation. Are there other-- Oh, there we go. Now we can see everybody. Are there other questions for Lisa? At this time, oh, member Sophie Cox.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Lisa, for this presentation. And it looked like the information you were sharing of the "this should happen," and that sort of thing, that is-- the "should" is coming from those sources, like the Massachusetts Department of Health and so forth, that, like, that's okay. And then my other question was about students who test positive. At what point can they return to school?
After day 5, if they have improved symptoms, they should mask through day 10 if they can, being fever-free for 24 hours as well. If-- There's also a little bit of guidance in the CDC or DPH about testing negative after day 5. They can return and not wear a mask as well.
Okay.
So it's isolation for five days. Return day 6 or after.
Okay, so that's not necessarily something that we would need to put in our policy, because that's already in the guidelines from DESI. Okay, got it.
Member Goldman.
Thank you. Lisa, thank you so much for this presentation. I really appreciate you putting it together and also sharing it with us ahead of time, as well as offering it at today's meeting. And my two questions, one is, could you please talk a little bit about the accuracy of the antigen tests that are used for symptomatic, especially if we're backing off on PCR, not only in a pooled testing setting, but also for people who are finding themselves symptomatic and looking for a test result? It said that we should go with an antigen-at-home test instead of a PCR test. Is that correct?
Correct, yes. Their percentage of accuracy has been higher. There are some instances, though, where there's false negatives, so that's why they recommend doing a second test. But they're pretty accurate.
And those protocols are also explained in the CDC, I mean, in the DESI guidelines and are supported by the Department of Public Health. Is that correct?
For which purpose?
For antigen testing--
Yes.
--in general.
It's in all the guidelines, yes.
Yep, so not PCR, but antigen, and that we would just use antigen test for symptomatic individuals. Can you also speak a little bit about, you know, you were saying that the recommendation is that individuals who-- Hold on, sorry. Oh, you were saying that individuals who are in the nurse's office and are symptomatic but get a negative result might not necessarily be dismissed.
Correct, if they have mild--
Yeah, mild symptoms, but that's always been the case, right? A child that seems sick or uncomfortable or something is happening in a classroom, they're sent to the nurse's office. We don't have antigen tests for the flu or, you know, other reasons a child might have, whatever results they have. And so nurses already have a pretty well-established idea of when to make the phone call to the parents and when a kid needs to be dismissed, right? Like, if a fever presents, they go home. We don't need to know what is happening for them, right? We say, "You go home. Take-- this child needs rest," and whatever. And then when they are symptom-free and are off of the meds for 24 hours, they come back to school, right? That's pretty standard. And so this treatment sounds a lot to me like it's moving into sort of the general way that we manage illness for symptomatic individuals in the system anyway.
Yes.
Is that right?
However, that being said, it is recommended that they test negative before return.
Yes, of course.
They should test negative prior to coming back to school. We did send home for one symptom, if you remember, early on in the fall. So this is loosening, and it is clinical judgment of your nursing staff. You are correct. They have an idea of when something needs to be a dismissal and when something is not necessarily dismissal.
Right, so in this instance, just like always, we're relying on our health professionals to make informed decisions about if an individual can remain in school or needs to go home, and-- is that right?
Clinical judgment.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, member Stein.
Thanks. I have a question and then a comment. The question is, it seems to me that the only mitigation strategy we have in place based on this guidance from DESI is to rapid test people that are symptomatic in school. And that's it.
Well, we still have our HEPA filters, Mike, and we still have our higher MERV filters, the MERV 13s, and ventilation and cleaning protocols.
Right, right, but we did dial those back in the spring because of noise, so we need to look at that, right? There is some ventilation, but there is a question on air exchanges. Yeah, but I think those are the two things we have. I just want to be clear that that is what the DESI guidance is. The other, the comment I wanted to make, too, is that I would encourage everyone in the community to take a look at the DHHP Epidemiologist Report on the Northampton Public Health website. The discussion of the changes to the CDC guidance is really fantastic, and essentially says that they can't make heads or tails while we're dropping everything, and really emphasizes the way in which we're turning this into something that has to be managed individually. And I want to take a minute and just point out a few things that I think is being lost in this discussion from the CDC guidance. And before I do that, I really want to thank my colleagues on the Rules and Policy Subcommittee for putting us in a position where we're able to have a second reading last week and to have this special meeting this evening. So I know it was a lift, and I appreciate it. And I also want to just acknowledge, and I think all of us want to protect the vulnerable in our community and maintain in-person learning as we're heading into this third pandemic fall. Given the course of the pandemic, I really think it's wise to have a well-thought-out masking policy in place, and I'm thrilled to see the exemption process solidified in this draft. Part of learning to live with COVID is accepting that at different times, we'll need to use different mitigation measures to keep our schools open and to protect the rights of vulnerable students. One of the most effective measures we have, and one of the last that remains, is universal masking. The draft of the proposal we have before us tonight triggers universal masking when Hampshire County elevates to medium for two or more weeks, or high for one week, or if the superintendent determines that transmission and student and staff absenteeism will have a negative impact on student learning. As a reminder, these triggers were drawn directly from our experience in April and May. When we removed masks, Hampshire elevated to medium, and we faced 1,400 staff absences that jeopardized our ability to provide in-person instruction across the board and particularly impacted our special education students.
Member Stein, I'm so sorry to interrupt. I just want to-- I'm wondering, are we still on the item--
Yes, I would--
--to the difference?
Okay, because-- Say the same thing. So we're still at Lisa's update that she's giving us, so--
Yeah, I'm getting there. I'm getting to the question about that, but I'm citing something in the CDC guidance that she cites in his presentation that says supports it, and I want to get some specific questions.
Oh, yeah, yeah, because you were talking about the policy that I thought that this was related to that. Okay.
No, no, it's not unrelated, but neither is that topic unrelated, right? So this is going to specifically go to some CDC policy questions, okay? So some members of the community, they've suggested that our triggers are not in line with the CDC guidance. However, if you read the guidance, the elements of the draft policy are completely in rhyme with the operational guidance for K to 12 schools and early care and education programs to support safe-in-person learning that the CDC released on August 11 of 2022. For those who have not had a chance to read it, and for members of our community, I'm going to read a few of the related sections to demonstrate the point. This was all entirely left out from DESI's guidance, even though they claim that what they are presenting and what we saw tonight is, in fact, in accordance. So the CDC guidance, it says, you know, "The addition of layering of COVID-19-specific strategies should be tied to COVID-19 community levels." Yep, "and community or setting-specific context, such as availability of resources, health status of students, and age of the population served." "Schools and ECE programs play critical roles in promoting equity in learning and health, particularly for groups disadvantaged by COVID-19, people living in rural areas, people with disabilities, immigrants, and people who identify as American Indian, Alaskan Native, Black or African-American, and Hispanic or Latino who have been disproportionately affected by COVID-19. These disparities have also emerged among children. School and ECE administrators and public health officials can promote equity in learning and health by demonstrating to families, teachers, and staff that comprehensive prevention strategies are in place to keep students, staff, families, and school communities safe and provide supportive environments for in-person learning. School and ECE program administrators should work with local health officials to consider other local conditions and factors when deciding to implement prevention strategies. School and ECE-specific indicators, such as rates of absenteeism among students and staff or presence of students or staff who are at risk of getting very sick with COVID-19, can help with decision-making. Additional community-level indicators that might be considered for use in decision-making about COVID-19 prevention are pediatric hospitalizations, results from wastewater surveillance, and other local information. When the COVID-19 community level indicates an increase, particularly if the level is high, or the school or ECE program is experiencing an outbreak, schools or ECE programs should consider adding layered prevention strategies described below to maintain in-person learning and keep ECE programs safely open. Although most strategies are recommended to be added or increased at a high COVID-19 community level, schools might want to consider adding layers when at medium, such as those in the considerations for prioritizing strategies section below based on school and community characteristics. When COVID-19 community levels move to a lower category or after an outbreak, schools and ECE programs can consider removing prevention strategies one at a time, followed by close monitoring of COVID-19 transmission within the school or ECE and the community COVID-19 level of their community in the weeks that follow. What you get into next is masking, right? And there is a very important passage in the masking regarding the U.S. Department of Education disability rights, right? Students with disability have certain rights. They cannot be segregated, and you may need to consider masking in order to protect them. I won't quote it at length, but this is just to say that everyone that is telling us that the CDC is only saying, "We recommend masks at high," that's not the case. What they've described here is essentially a version of our policy. And I'm wondering if Lisa has any thoughts about these elements of the guidance, which ones we should consider, or perhaps why DESI does not mention any of this.
I think, Mike, that it's still a fluid, you know, a fluid process, right? So these will be discussions that we will have with our Health and Human Services, looking at numbers and looking at our data. I can't speak for DESI. I don't know if they left out language for a certain reason. I am not able to speak for the Commissioner in DESI, but I feel that these will be ongoing communications and ongoing conversations that we have at the SHAC meeting, at the ad hoc meeting, to bring back best guidance.
No, I really, I hear that. I guess tonight, though, we're faced with making a decision about amending this policy, right? Which will set the stage, and we're talking about guidance from the state that is relying on CDC guidance. So while things are fluid, if we're pointing to this thing and saying, "This is why this guidance makes sense," I think we actually have to grapple with what it says. So that's why I'm reusing it. I-- Yeah, I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Member Levy.
Thank you, Lisa. I really want to sincerely thank you, not just for all your sharing tonight, but for all of your work for the last two and a half years. You have been such an amazing resource and source, and it's been really comforting to know that you are there doing all of the thinking and working that you're doing, so thank you. I don't know if you're the person to answer this question, but you're probably the best person here to answer this question. At our last meeting, the mayor shared with us that our city is going to move to doing wastewater testing. And I was hoping you could just help me better understand how that process will work and inform our rates. Is it going to be-- Are we going to have a better sense of, you know, before we were saying, "Well, we're never going to get to high because we're not testing the way that we were before." And so now that we're not going to be doing testing the way we were before, does wastewater testing, is that going to give us better indicators? What's the, like, how will the timing work of getting those results versus when we might see the impact in our community? Can you just, or anybody, give us a little bit of a sense of how that would work and inform the process?
I'm not the expert on that. Commissioner O'Leary and I had a brief conversation about wastewater today and kind of looking at how it's going to-- We're going to be able to look at our Northampton data, so I can come back with another answer once I have a further conversation, Deana, with Commissioner O'Leary for you, but I'm not the expert on that.
Okay, thank you.
Lisa, am I right that wastewater testing, you start to see a trend earlier, right? So it's sort of, it gives you an indication if rates are rising before you start to see it sort of manifest in the community.
As I understand, it's about a two-week span.
So you may not know the answer to this either, but just to follow that question, is there anything that would shift, that would need to shift in our policy or our language because we're doing the wastewater testing versus what we might have in our language now?
Okay, I'll be honest, I don't know, Deana.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, are there any other questions about Lisa's presentation or the information that she shared with us? All right, I don't see any. Lisa, I hope, I don't know if you're planning on staying with us. Thank you very sincerely. That was a great deal of information that you pulled together on fairly short notice, so we're very, very grateful. Thank you.
And also-- Thank you for all the work that everyone does as well. I appreciate you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is review and a possible vote on recommendations regarding testing. And Superintendent Pearson Campbell-- Superintendent Pearson Campbell, your name is attached to this on the agenda. I don't know if you had a conversation with Annie about wanting to. Um, open up this conversation, but, uh, the floor is yours if you'd like.
Well, Lisa and I, um, sat together this week to talk about testing. And so one of the things we talked about was symptomatic, um, for, that's why we look at that policy from there. I understand, um, it might change over time because Stacy might sing up something next week, something different. But at this point in time, would it just symptomatic testing that we have currently in our district, that policy that we had last year? So we'll continue on that. But I know on Monday we have the COVID ad hoc group. And those two, um, work alongside with them so that we can ensure that the policy and what happens on the, on the ground that they can met together. So it's still ongoing.
Okay, thank you for that. Member Robbins.
Thank you. Um, I want to make sure that our community knows there seems to be some confusion about what we're actually doing tonight. And my understanding as a member of Wilson Policy is that we're clarifying. A policy that will stand us, um, in good stead. In what we, um, have been told is not the likelihood, but the eventuality. Of another surge of COVID that's going to impact teaching and learning in our district. My understanding is that what we're not doing tonight is making a masking mandate. I think that there are some members of the community who think that our discussion tonight is around whether or not children are going to return. Uh, requiring masking to school in two weeks. And as far as we know right now, um, our policy would be the only thing that would. Um, indicate that there was a need for that, and that's what we'll be working on. But, um. It's, it's not really something people need to be feeling fiercely about. That's going to happen hopefully in the next two weeks. I will add a caveat that, um. Apparently there are a number of districts throughout the country that have actually required return masking. New Haven, for example, has required it. And we need to be really aware of that. Our children have been traveling all over the United States and elsewhere. Kids have been going to camp, kids have been going to the Cape. Uh, we know that there's an increased transmission rate and we have no control over that. It's something that we are doing the very best that we can to create a policy that will keep our children and our staff safe. And that will really help us to continue to keep in-person learning. Um, from what we've learned in the past, and I hope that puts concerns to the rest, um, to rest about folks who. Um, have been perhaps a little confused about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so the item we're on is about, uh, testing. Does anyone have any questions or comments about testing? Member Stein.
I, I mean, I really feel strongly that just having symptomatic testing is not enough. Um, I doubt that I'll be able to convince you to offer more robust asymptomatic testing. But I do think that the district should provide take-home tests. For students that need them. I think it's an equity issue. And I think if we're inviting them into our schools, which they have a right to be in every day. And there being exposed to other students who are unmasked. Least we can do is give them a test rather than putting the burden on them to source one if that's a difficulty. Um, so I would, I would, uh. You know, suggest, and I don't know the right volume, the right number, but I would suggest that we do make. Rapid at-home tests available for students who want them. And for families that want them, so they can monitor their students. It will help us stay open. It will help students have peace of mind and be able to take care of themselves and their family members. And I really think we should do that. I think the shift that we're talking about here that was outlined is extremely radical. Uh, from where we were and doesn't really match where we are in terms of the disease. And, um, I think as an issue of equity, we really should be inviting this. So I don't have a motion because I don't have a number, but that's my, my sense of it.
Thank you. Member Levy?
Thanks. I have a logistical question about that, uh, because I agree that. Um, if kids are sent home and we're telling them they can't come back without a negative test result. Uh, it can be hard for some kids and families to navigate and, and get the tests that they need. Um. My understanding is that free, that antigen tests are still free, uh, through insurance companies. Um, and I'm wondering if we as schools have access to free. Testing, like obviously what Lisa just presented was some pretty high costs for, for purchasing test kits and being able to send them home. I'm just wondering if there are other means that we can use to, uh, get our hands on tests that we can. Make available to people if they want them to take them home.
Just, just to clarify, last year for everyone, if it was a difficulty for caregivers to obtain a test, we did send home. The kit, so we would be able to do that, but.
We lost you, Lisa.
Then you're gonna, oh, you lost me.
Yeah, you cut out for a second.
We lost you after the but.
Yeah.
Would, would, um, so. We did supply caregivers if it was a difficulty with kits last year, um, if they needed to have one. We do have those extra binax kits that we can use for symptomatic testing in the schools and we could potentially send an I health. Test home, but if you're looking at sending home, home tests like we did last year. Then that is going to have to be a review of the finances with the COMBI system.
Um, yeah, thank you. So it sounds like. Thank you. So it sounds like what you're saying is. We won't continue sending home tests to everybody the way we did, but we do have the capacity to send home, to send home tests if somebody needs one.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Member Robbins?
Just a point of information. I think that I read the other day that the White House made a statement after the CDC did that said. That the Biden administration, um, I, I think that what I read and someone else who's more expert could check up on it. Is committed to once again providing, um, home test kits. So, uh, that might be something that, um, Meredith can check out for us or the Department of Public Health. But if there's a process that we have to go through to apply for that, I guess that's something, it probably would come through the state, right, Mayor?
Um, I would, I mean, I guess it, it, yeah, depends on what kind of program, um, is being proposed.
But, but I would, I'm just going to remind us that if there's any ability, um, for us to be able to access those things, I hope that we're really on the cutting edge of looking for it. Because we, we, um, we went through this last year at Christmas, if you remember, where we really. We thought, gosh, we got those free, those free kits. It'd be great to send them home with kids. Um, we can test kids before they come back to school after the, um, sorry, at the holiday, the winter holiday. I apologize for that. Um, and that. We have then, we have a gauge for that. That's a piece of metric and a piece of data that we can sort of lean on that way. And we weren't able to pull it together fast enough to make that work. But if there's any way that we can be a little bit more on top of that. I guess I would, I would say that would be something that we would strive for.
I'm, I'm happy to talk to Commissioner O'Larry. I don't know anyone who works harder to access all possible resources than, than her, so. Um, but I will be, I'll be glad to have a conversation with her about that. Member Stein?
Yeah, just on that point, you know, two days ago, in a statement that's on the White House site, they said that they made them available for schools last year and that they would again this year. But there's no details on how one would access them, et cetera, but there seems to be. Some movement to try to do that, but when and how, who knows? Um, but if you're interested, if anyone's interested, if you look at the, the school splash page. On the White House about this, you'll, you'll see it listed in there.
Great, thank you. Any other? Discussion regarding testing? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to, uh, the next and last item, which is review and possible vote and recommendations of policy E B C F A, which is the face mask and face coverings. And Dr. Pearson Campbell, your name is also on this. So did you want to lead it off?
So I, I'd like to thank everyone. I know this is a hard discussion. I know it's very emotional, but we also think about best for our kids. So I'd like to review the policy, um, today to ensure that we can get for September first will be coming the next two weeks or so. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, and, okay, Holly, since you sort of led, not to throw this at you, but since you led this last time, would you want, would you like to start off or? Um, did we decide we were gonna, today was the day we were going in line by line? Is that correct? Or, yes, I see some nodding. Sorry, Member Gazy, not apologies. You're looking for the? Does that help if I do that?
Yes, thank you. Okay, um. I'm just trying to.
Good to remember therapy Cox real quick while.
Thank you.
Your document up. Remember therapy Cox?
Um, yeah, I have specific suggestions for changes to make and then, um. I had at least started, I didn't complete kind of a list of the major. Questions that still seemed unresolved. Um, so I'm wondering, um. Which of those two would be useful at this point or Member Gazy, if you have something that you, um, had wanted to, um, present before that?
No, I think that, uh. I have many questions and, um. Pieces that I think we need to go through, um. If you want to set us off on the specifics, go right ahead. Otherwise, you know, we can go right down the line because. You know, I see stuff in the first paragraph, but.
Yeah, I, um, my experience with kind of going through it, um, line by line is that then. We spend a lot of time on things that actually aren't as like central to the policy itself. Um, so I'm wondering if maybe we can kind of jump into some of the things that at least I see as. Bigger, um, um, or. More impactful issues within the policy. And then go back to the line by line.
Go right ahead, uh, Ms. Seraphy Cox. Member, member.
Yeah, um. So one, um, one thing that I wanted for us to clarify is, um. In the criteria that would. Trigger a universal masking policy. Um, we talk about the, um, the CDC level as being, you know, low or medium or high. Um, and, uh, i- is it true that, that, uh, I believe that it's true that there's a differentiation made between. Hospitalization level and the transmission level so that, for instance, we're in a low hospitalization level right now, but a high transmission level. So, um. Uh, I, I would suggest that we clarify that what we mean there is the hospitalization level, not the transmission level. I mean, I don't think we have to say not transmission, but maybe just add the word hospitalization or something like that. Um, because I don't want people to think that. If we pass this policy, that, that means automatically that we're going in to, um. Required universal masking on, you know, at the beginning of school, uh, since our transmission rate is high. Does that? Does that make sense? Um, so that's, that's, uh, uh, kind of my first suggestion. I think maybe I'll just kind of leave it there and then. Uh, and then. Come back to me once we're done with that conversation. I'm wondering if we can kind of bucketize, that is not a word, put into buckets, um, our, our discussion a little bit. That would at least be helpful for my brain.
Okay, uh, discussion on the first bucket?
Yes, this, this, this idea of. Hospitalization being the, um, or the hospitalization level being the trigger.
Hmm. Member Levy?
So can I just clarify what bucket we're in right now? Um, I appreciate the differentiation and distinction between hospitalization and transmission levels. Are we talking about the part of the, uh, like you point us to your paragraph? Are we in universal indoor masking requirement? Uh. Yeah, where are we? Are you talking, I, I'm, I, my, um, confusion is that. You know, our, our current draft of the policy talks about, about medium. And that medium being the trigger for universal masking. So I just want to clarify that what you're suggesting, Member Seraphy Cox, is that our trigger actually be high hospitalization levels, not medium. Whatever.
No, I, I was, I was simply meaning, I wasn't meaning to change. Uh, the levels that are in there, but just to clarify that the levels that we're talking about. Are hospitalization levels, not transmission levels. Because if we were talking about transmission levels, then we would be going into universal masking. You know, if, if there were school today, we would be in universal masking. And I'm just trying to clarify that we're talking about hospitalization.
Could we get the document, the draft up so we could all be looking at it? Is that?
Yeah, can you, can you point us to the line? I know we're not going line by line, but can you, just so we all are, are aware of what we're talking about, can you point us to where in the policy we are right now?
Yes, um, so it's the, um, under the heading that says universal indoor masking requirement when a mask. Requirement is in effect, which that probably could be clarified itself. Um, but then, uh, it's the four bullets that, that outline the, um. The triggers and the first trigger is when required by law. So I'm looking at the second trigger, that second bullet.
Okay, and so you want that to read when the CDC. Community or the CDC hospitalization level in Hampshire College?
I mean, I, I, I have a feeling that Member Stein or other members might have the more specific language. That, that, uh, that should be used there, but I'm. Wanting to click, for us to clarify that. I don't have specific language suggestions.
Am I in the right section right here?
You are, yes. That second bullet right there.
Member Robbins, you wanted to see this, right? I, I thought I heard a request.
Member Seraphy Cox, I'm just trying to clarify what you're suggesting. So I'm not, I'm confused about. Whether you're, you're suggesting we keep medium, you're suggesting we keep high, those words in there. But you're suggesting that there be, that, that we're talking about hospitalization. Levels, not transmission levels. I'm just confused how this relates to this paragraph.
Uh, because here it says the CDC community level in Hampshire County. And so I'm, I'm clarifying which community level we're talking about, but I want, I want some real, uh. Um, I, I know that, uh, uh, honestly, I would like to maybe go to Member Stein at this point. I mean, uh, uh, Mayor. You know, I don't know what, what, uh, where the hands are and so forth, but. I have, I have a feeling that he might have some, um. Some guidance that, uh, on, on that specifically.
Right, so you want to clarify whether that CDC means hospitalization, that their levels are based on hospitalizations, yes?
Uh, that is one part of it, yes.
Um, so Member Levy, okay, Member Stein? Uh, you're muted.
So sorry, uh, it, it's a great question. I do think it's important to, to be explicit. So in February, the new, uh, combined metrics, which includes hospitalization and cases. Is called CDC community level. So that's what's in there. That's that combined metric that includes hospitalization. The other, um.
That excludes or includes?
It in, it includes. So right now we are low. Hampshire County is low. We're green, we're low under the CDC community level. So that's a combination of cases and hospitalizations. So those are, that's, that's the, the, the both one, right? The one that is just on, um, cases is, is called community transmission. So like right now we're low for CDC community level, but we are high for CDC community transmission. We have a high amount of transmission, but because the hospitalizations aren't that high, that weighted one is low. Right? So this refers to that combined metric, which the CDC calls the community level.
Okay, that, that is super, super helpful, Member Stein, thank you. Um, so. What I would like then is either, um, some sort of reference or link to, you know, this. The specific level that we're talking about, because if people just Google. You know, CDC level Hampshire County, they might come to the transmission level instead of the community level. So I think that's, that's really. So I think that's, that's really um, the, the clarification I'm suggesting there.
Could we have a parenthesis that just includes cases and hospitalizations after?
Well, can we, can, can we continue discussing before we land on language maybe? Cause I've got a question about that, if you're ready for that question. Uh, sorry, just a second, I'm gonna just trying to get them to be quiet over here. Um, the, so I guess my question is, so member Stein, you just said that the level that is referred to. Hey, can you close the door, please? The level that, that is, that we're referring to in this paragraph is the same measurement that we were using, that we've been using since February. And my concern is that there were times in the late spring where we were at medium for two or more weeks. And um, we, even though we were at medium, we weren't seeing increased cases in schools, or if we were, they were very isolated and in pockets. And my concern is that by using the medium here, we would have been in, we would have, the last time we had this conversation in May, we were in medium and we would have, that would have triggered masks. And I think that what I'm understanding from the CDC and what I'm understanding as I'm reading so many of these different links is that, is that if we stay at medium, we're going to be an outlier. And that what is being recommended by the CDC, what is being recommended by D E S I, what is being recommended by the source that was sent to us, that of course I, I don't have open anymore about uh, issues of, of equity in schools, is that they're all suggesting that we use high. And I, I understand, member Stein, that you read uh, an excerpt. Uh, and it does give um, us the opportunity to, to use multiple variances and multiple measurements. But I'm, I have a concern that if we, if I'm understanding this correctly and what member Sarafi Cox, you're suggesting in terms of the, the hospitalization plus the transmission, but that that's the same measurement that we have been using, that um, that medium is too conservative. Uh, and that if we're at medium, we can have something that says, we will let the community know that we're at medium and that mask is strongly recommended. But that to go to universal masking at that point, uh, from what I'm reading, that that does not uh, feel appropriate.
Member Goldman?
I think that there's others raised their hand before me.
Yes, but other, I'm, I'm trying to go to people who have not yet, keep the conversation moving.
Thank you. Um, I really, I appreciate that. And I agree, I think that the, the level should not, I think the level at which a universal mask mandate should be put in place should be along um, in alignment with the guidelines that we're receiving from the CDC, D E S I, and more importantly, the Department of Public Health and our leading health professionals who are in the schools and are seeing how this is working at that level. And, and that's certainly something that was, that worked really well when we were working with the Shack previously. Um, and because the Shack is still in place and now we'll have this COVID ad hoc, I think it's a lot easier to know when we are pressing for and highly advising uh, families to wear masks in school. And I think that families would really appreciate that feedback, like would really receive that well and would feel the agency they're asking for to make those decisions about masking for their students. Or for example, with my daughter, you know, it's be like, you can go, and then when you're pulled out for services, you know, don't wear your mask because it makes sense for those individual specialists to be able to see the way that you're talking and checking to make sure that's okay with them. Um, so I appreciate that recommendation, uh, member Levy, uh, Levy about, sorry, um, for reducing the um, requirement for masks to be down to high only. And um, I also wonder, I also appreciate, member Sarafi Cox, that you were talking about sort of our framework or approach to managing this document. I, I feel like there, this document is so much to it. It's really um, bulky and it's trying to do a lot of things. And I don't want to be here till midnight. So I wonder if um, Mayor or um, member Gazy would could think of um, a way to sort of, you know, really understand how we're going to go about this. Am I making a motion to change that piece? And we're going through and changing like what people bring up? Or are we going to go into like each section? Here's the intro, let's talk about the intro. Okay, let's vote, let's go into the ad hoc piece. Hopefully everyone has read this and understands where they stand on each part and um, where they care the most or where their margins are and that we're, I and hopefully we all kind of are coming together because we're, we're talking about the same issue for a long time, about the same community. So um, if anyone could speak to that, I'd appreciate it, thank you.
Sure, um, and I'm happy to go to member Gazy. I would say that you would want to move to amend and um, and say what you wanted to amend to this document, look at, see if you get a second.
Okay.
And then if you had a series of amendments, you might want to do them together.
Okay, then I would, I mean, the only thing is that there might be amendments that would say like, according to this issue, this item, this part, you know, all of these to be in alignment with D E S I and um, the Department of Public Health. And do we even need to have these specified here or have them just refer to that we will follow that guidance? Um, so I'm wondering what you think of that also, man?
I mean, if, if that was an amendment you wanted to put forward to change this document so that that's what it hinged on, or that's um, it would be based on that guidance, you could move to amend that that way as well. I know it's, it's a lot and it's very hard to read it the way it is right now. So I, I understand that it's, it's challenging to try to amend it, but alas, this is what we have to do uh, in a public meeting.
Yeah, I was sort of trying to structure it a little bit also. Um, okay, then I would move to make an amendment to this um, policy in section universal indoor masking will be required dot bullet two um, to strike the elevates uh, to strike to medium for two or more weeks or.
So it would then just say um, elevates to high for one week?
Yes.
Okay, so that's the motion.
Oh, I guess that bullet continues uh, and says universal indoor masking under this criteria will be rescinded when the CDC community level has subsided to medium for two weeks.
Okay.
So that's my amendment on the floor and I'm open to friendly amendments to my motion.
Is there?
A second, if I can add a friendly amendment, um, which is that I, I don't, maybe this doesn't belong in a policy, but I think maybe it does because I think it speaks to our protocol. But I do think that we need to actively communicate when we are at medium. And we can, and so I would add some language in here that says when we are, when we elevate to medium for two or more weeks, a communication will go out notifying the community and strongly recommending masking. But that universal masking will not be required unless we get to high and then the, the language that you've got, member Goldman.
Thank you, yeah, I absolutely, absolutely accept that friendly amendment. Um, though that my mind goes to wondering like, is there an interest in notifying the community on a weekly basis about where we're at? And no, just when it gets to a level where we're urging or recommending masking, that that message would go out, great.
I, I think so. I do just think to your point though, member Goldman, I think that the, the D E S I and the CDC guidelines do give um, leeway to each district to make decisions. And so if we simply say we're going to follow their guidance, like we could say that, but then their guidance says make your own decisions sometimes too. So I, to your point that you made earlier about should we just scrap the policy and say we're going to follow their, their guidance? I do think we need some specificity for our community so that our community knows how we are going to proceed when.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, so the motions are made and seconded, so discussion to the motion that is on the floor right now. Okay, member Stein to this motion?
Yeah, this has to go to sort of the description of events that um, member Levy laid out. Um, my recollection was that we, just around the time we voted to drop the universal mask mandate, we switched from low to medium. So it was within a week or two of that change to medium that we took our masks off and we immediately got into trouble. Um, and had to, you know, effectively reinstate the universal mask mandate to keep schools open. Um, one of the reasons I'm arguing for medium here is because Director O'Leary said, based on the demographics of our population, we're likely on ever to get to high, that's because of the combination of a hospitalization rate and the case rate. So when we went to medium, everyone around us was high, Franklin was high, Worcester was high, Hampton was high, Berkshire was high, we stayed at medium. And she said, she doesn't think we'll ever go to high. So if this amendment goes to high, I don't even think we should have that provision. I think you should just have an absenteeism provision because we're probably never going to get there on that combined metric. Um, I do think and do recall from the way things played out is when we took off masks and we changed to medium, that's when we got the five to six weeks of explosive cases. So that, that's the only thing we have to go on, right? And if the Director of Public Health says we're never going to get the high, I don't know why we would put high in here, right? It's because of the way that is calculated and the sort of demographics of our community. So um, I read the CDC guidance that I quoted earlier as saying, based on local conditions or the particularities of your area, you may want to consider medium instead of high. And I would argue that based on our experience and the fact that our public health director says we're never going to high, we're one of those cases that should take that guidance from the CDC, which is why I think we would be um, well served to vote down this uh, amendment, thanks.
Okay, I'm, so remember Sheriff Cox, your hand was up, I don't think her, her hand ever came down, so, okay, so no. So member Robbins, is this two, what's on the floor?
Yes, it is, although my hand was up before that motion was made, um, so, and it was not recognized. I find this process really awkward and, and time consuming and I kind of wish we had, you know, I don't know what a bucket is, but I do know that it would have, for me, it would have been more helpful if we went back um, and worked on it in sections which would include the introduction to the policy and then looked at what the meat of the policy is and then looked at what the exemptions would be. But if people want to go through this one by one, voting on each part, I do think we're going to be here for a really long time. Um, but I'm going to make one simple suggestion. I hear what the uh, motion is on the floor. This leaves out the ad hoc advisory committee. What if we take the or out and we add and? I would love to know that we were having a triple conversation about why we are masking or why we are unmasking, that we're actually consulting the experts. We're working with this, with the district, we're working with our public health officials and they all agree, this is a good time to have masks. Or they all agree, this is a good time to take the masks off and they have the data that they pulled together to look at that and they come to us and they say, this is what we find. And I like the whole idea of those groups collaborating together and having those discussions together and bringing it to us to make what would be a really difficult decision. And those, those, my, my observation then on the motion on the floor um, as well as the process that we're using, which I don't think we had a general discussion about um, whether that was something we found would work.
Okay, um, do you want to suggest that as a friendly amendment? To change the or to both, so the ors, all of the ors that are in this section to ands?
I don't see how it could be an amendment, this is completely different.
I mean, that's what it.
It, 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 it could be, it could be a friendly amendment. Um, my guess is, member Robbins, you don't want to change all of the ors to and because you don't want it to be required by law and all these things, cause then if it's not.
Required by law piece, no.
Yeah, um, I, what I heard is that the, the or in the second bullet would change to an and. And that to me, uh, you know, as the parliamentarian, that, that feels um, uh, germane to the current motion.
Member Goldman, would you accept that?
Um, I I, I don't, I actually don't want to be the one to decide whether that's a change to this amendment. And so I'm going to deny it so that we're making a vote about, if we're doing this as a friendly amendment, we're just gonna like um, vote it or in pieces, right?
It would be incorporated into your amendment, if you don't want it incorporated.
I understand.
And you can say no, and then member Robbins could, could move to amend it after.
Well, it wouldn't work that way, right? We would vote on the amendment. Like she was like, do you accept this as a friendly amendment or not? If I say yes, then we change this to be high only and we change the or to be an and, which I do like. But I don't want, I don't want to stack them like that.
Then you can.
But I want to hold my, I want to hold my motion also. Like, I don't want to limit, yeah, it's sort of a Venn diagram.
Can I make a suggestion about this particular thing, even though it's not my turn?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, is what, I, what I'm hearing, member Robbins, is that maybe it should stay in or if this gets changed to high. So that what we're saying is they'll be required when the CDC community level in Hampshire County elevates to high or when the superintendent of schools determines based on all the ad hoc folks that there's a need. That when, like, we're not at high, but all these people are saying we actually really need them. So to me, the or is, if we go to high, the or gives us the out that I think folks are talking about wanting to say, we've got all these experts who are reading the data and they can tell us if actually we're not at high right now, but we need to have masks because of the absenteeism or because of the transmission or what have you. I don't know how that lands, member Robbins, with you.
Yeah, I mean, I, my, my motion is, or my suggestion is very different than what um, member Goldman suggested. So I actually would leave the original document as it is and I would just make those layers and have that be, I, I feel very, it's very difficult to look forward into the future and think about what will happen until it actually happens. And I just want as many people at the table talking about that with as much data as they can and they don't want us to be hung up on one single piece of it. So I'm happier leaving it as it is with um, the medium and the ands, um, not the law at the beginning. But that's not my motion, that's not the motion that's on the floor. I'm not sure that I can, what I want to have happen would be suitable, as I said, to a friendly amendment to what member Goldman suggested.
Okay, so it does then sound like you are suggesting something fairly different. And perhaps we vote on member Goldman's uh, amendment and see how that flies. And then we can come back if that doesn't fly. Because I, because I think for me, one of the things that's really important is that we have clarity and transparency for our community. And if what we say is, we'll change the masking whenever people think we should change the masking, but we don't say, these are the things we're looking for, then I don't, we're just sort of where we have been and people are saying that that's not adequate. So I just want to make sure I'm on the same page and understanding that our current motion that's on the floor is that the language gets changed to high, but we still have the ors in here which give us the input from all of these different groups. Member Goldman, is that, is that accurate?
Yes, I actually really appreciate. Yes, I actually really appreciate Member Robbins, this amendment, this, you know, bringing it up this way because I am looking for it to be for us not to be required to wear masks at medium, but when when the levels get up to medium, that's when, as is the case all along prior to that, the professionals, the the committees we've created to help inform us about this are making recommendations for masking. So if if you have when it's medium, we go to masking. And when it's medium and the superintendent determines the rates are high and this, I don't, I think that that is too many demands on moving to masks. So I would modify my motion to just say hi and to not have the medium part. And that way it can say masking will be required when it goes to high. So we don't need to deliberate on whether or not masking when it's high. We go right to masking. And so that's a metric I feel very good about. But I don't want it to be like when it's high and we determine it makes sense. I just high is enough. And so that's when the ors would stay because then you say if it's high or if it's not high, but transmission rates in the school or something like that, because also we know about our community, you know, wastewater or hospital or transmission rates might be influenced by groups that don't affect transmission in schools. Like if it's Smith or if it's at a facility where that really are are numbers in the community spike, but those communities are fairly isolated from our school community. So I actually am not not accepting that friendly amendment and I, my amendment stands that the second bullet would take out the medium masking at medium for two weeks. And keeping the ors so that if masking, if the level is not at high, but at medium, we can still require masking if needed.
Understood. So it elevates to high for one week and has subsided to, but then the second part of it subsided to low or to medium for two weeks. I just want to make sure we get it. Which one is it? In your motion?
Well, in my motion, it would be subsides to medium for two weeks. But it, but then it would still require. But then at that time, the superintendent or others could still require the masks.
Got it.
If it seems so appropriate.
Okay, got it.
And just to draw your attention, Mayor, I put what I heard of Member Levy's amendment about.
Thank you. I see that. Okay, that is helpful. I was trying to figure out how to make this so people could see this. Can everyone see? That right there? Okay, thank you. So Member Sheriff Cox, did you have a comment to what's on the floor?
No.
Okay, Member Gacy.
I also agree with Kaya about changing it to high with the or that would allow us. I also think I forget who was talking about it, that there should be, you know, if we're talking in our district dashboard, which has that giving parents warning that we're at hot medium now, so you might want to consider masking more. And I don't know if eventually that'd be able to tie in with our wastewater stuff or, you know, whether that's another kettle of fish that Shaq would take care of. But I think it is important that the community know if, especially if we strike it down the if we make it so that it has to go to high and not medium, that the community knows when when things are starting to heat up. Because I noticed in all the C D C guidelines, you know, they never say, oh, you you absolutely have to mask, but it best practice would include wearing a mask if possible. So, you know, communicating that the levels are rising to our crew is better, but I do also go with Kaya's motion. I am with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Member Davis.
Thank you. I wanted to say one thing is that it was mentioned like many mentions ago, something about that perhaps it, this is what I heard. Does it even make sense to put high since we're never, maybe we're never going to really get to high and that medium? And then we can't sit, but I, we don't know that. And I I am agreeing, I'm hearing Member Gazy and Member Goldman mentioned to switching it to high, and I really agree with that. And the other thing is Member Robbins mentioned perhaps right after we vote on this one to more systematically go through this, like pick how we're gonna go through it because it get, it gets confusing. Like I'm forgetting, I keep forgetting what the motion is and I'm trying to hold it in my mind and I scribble it down. And this is very important. I I guess my last thing is I'm always one to go for, like as a Member Levy said, like transparent, clear. Everybody knows what the policy is and so much work has gone into this that I'm not discounting any of this labor to put all these words on the page. Like this is a lot of work. Following the science, being straight up and not the if then or stuff, because then people don't know what I think the community is over that. So I should we, I'm wondering if we, I don't know if there are any more hand, oh, any more hands up if
There are not.
They make the vote for that. I don't know how that works.
If there are no hands up, then we don't, then then we can go ahead and.
Can't raise my hand.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Member Agna.
That's okay. I just, I didn't need to speak before, but I did want everyone to know that I've been listening very carefully. And I appreciate everything that this committee has been wrestling with as well as our community. And I also want to thank Lisa especially for her work preparing on short nose tonight. As well as the Rules and Policy Committee. I I know this is difficult. And I know that we're all keeping children in our in our hearts. I am prepared to vote for the high as well. And I'm glad that we have who we have to weigh in on all of these issues and metrics and time that's possible. We might need to return to masking, but for now I really do agree that this with this motion and I'm happy to go ahead and also just wanted to reassure you that I have been listening, even though I can't, you can't see me and I can see wealth fleet from here. So thank you very much. That's all.
Okay, thank you for that. I'm, I'm sorry. I should have checked in on you.
I don't know. It's okay. It's fine. I really was listening and I just thought I just wanted to make sure people knew that I was, I was here and listening. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Member Miller.
All I wanted to say is I agree with, first of all, I agree with having it elevated to high, but I also really wanted to emphasize what Member Davis said about making sure that is very clear to the entire community when we are getting to medium and when it's we're on the verge of going to a mask mandate. If we get to high, I think it needs to be very clear and very transparent to everyone so that we, it's put out there clearly so everyone knows.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Member Stein.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I have to admit, I'm a little confused. I hear a lot of talk about listening to the science and looking at the data and listening to our local experts. And we're about to vote and it looks like it will pass on a motion to change this to high. When Director O'Leary was telling us it's not going to happen. And when we're sort of laying out like, here's when we got into trouble. So I I'm a little confused, right? It doesn't seem like folks really understand the weightedness of that metric we're talking about. And I'm concerned that it's you know, that this actually isn't bringing us the clarity we need, right? Because even just having these ors, like say we never get to high and then we have to impose the mask mandate. That's, there's no clarity, right? Because how are we going to explain what the absentee rate was? How are we going to explain, like, I I don't feel like we're getting closer to this automatic sort of switch that I thought the committee really wanted. So so that does concern me. Thanks.
Thanks. Member Goldman.
And I just want to mention that I'm not looking for an automatic switch and that I'd like to call the question.
I don't see any other hands up. So instead of voting to call the question, if there's no further discussion, roll call please. Annie on the motion on the floor, which is Okay, so Member Levy, so Member Goldman's amendment, when C D C community level at Hampshire County elevates to high for one week, universal indoor masking criteria will be rescinded when the C D C community level in Hampshire County has subsided to medium for two weeks. And a communication will go out to schools to encourage masks. Oh, wait, no, that was, that was an earlier one.
No, that's, that's a part of it, though.
That is a part of it. Okay.
When Hampshire County elevates to medium for two more weeks or maybe just one.
Okay.
To the school, we need to encourage masks.
Okay.
Member Levy, I actually, I have a quick question just about, but what does it actually mean to be high for one week? Does that mean we don't do the mandate until it's been high for a week?
Maybe it's just it goes to high.
Yeah, when it goes to high.
I don't know how to edit that. Oh, I figured it out.
Okay. Okay, so when the community level in Hampshire County elevates to high, and then it'll be rescinded when the level has subsided to medium for two weeks' time. And when it goes to medium on its way to high, a communication will go out to schools to go out to the school community to encourage masks. That is the motion on the floor. Roll call please, Annie. Member Robbins.
I'm sorry, I can't vote for this. My vote is no.
Member Gacy.
Yes.
Member Sheriff Cox.
No.
Member Stein.
No.
Member Levy.
Yes.
Member Miller.
Yes.
Member Goldman.
Yes.
Member Agna.
Yes.
Member Davis.
Yes.
And Mayor Shara. Yes. Okay, so that amendment passes. Sheriff Cox, could you, could we start cleaning up this document? Could you incorporate that in there and then we can all be looking at?
Yeah, I I have been during this conversation, I have been cleaning up the document, um, accepting the the edits that have been made and then I can go in. I'll use suggesting mode to to show the changes since we'll ultimately have to pass the whole thing. The changes that we just voted on just now.
Okay.
Sorry, and it did pass, right?
Correct.
Yes. Yeah. Make sure I heard it right. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so I feel like I was hearing requests to kind of go back up to the top and start from the top. Yeah. Okay, so going back up to the top. Do we, instead of going line by line, do we want to go paragraph by paragraph? And if people have comments? Okay, so first paragraph. Excuse me, any comments? Or amendments? Seeing. Give everyone a second. I see reading guest Member Sheriff Cox.
Sorry, the one changed the first paragraph was where is it here? Sorry. Oh, a citation. The peer reviewed studies have demonstrated that da, 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 da. We talked in our last meeting about wanting a citation there and Member Stein was going to send that link. So I'm wondering if we can just put that that link in there as we had intended to.
Okay, do we have, do you have that link?
I probably have it in my email. Member Stein, you emailed it, right?
I don't see Member Stein.
Okay, well, I'll look in my email and while we're talking and I'll get back to you on this. We can go on. Yeah.
Member Levy.
Okay, I don't want to get nitpicky, so you guys can tell me to be quiet about this because this is not really like content rich. But the, there's this, the sentence that says the school committee in consultation with its COVID nineteen policy ad hoc committee, the superintendent of schools and the local public health officials will determine when changes to this policy are required. But I feel like what we are trying to do is establish a policy that gives us enough wiggle room. But also gives us enough clarity to the community that we're not going to keep coming back and changing, changing, changing the policy. That this policy is saying masking is going to be required when this happens or this happens or this happens or this happens. And so I'm just putting that out there that when I read that I was confused. That if what we're saying is this poli, I mean, and maybe this is what we say in all our policies, this policy is in place until we change it. And if that's the case, let's keep this language. Just felt confusing. And so I'm raising that, but I'm sorry, I probably should have just kept my mouth shut.
Okay. Any other? Anything else on a paragraph one? No. Moving on to paragraph two. I have one thing, if you don't mind, Member Goldman. So if by the North Hampton Director of Public Health, we mean Meredith O'Leary, is that what we mean by? That so, so it is now the Department of Health and Human Services and she's the commissioner of the Department of Health and Human Services. Which is a fairly new change in the last few months. Do you want me to go to just change that? Yes, okay. And then, Member Goldman, did you just, had you just raised your hand?
I did, but I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else have something? Next paragraph. Anyone have anything? On the third paragraph. See any hands? On to the fourth paragraph. COVID ad hoc committee. We expect you to review metrics and rationale. Member Davis.
I'm just wondering back in the paragraph right above that, the one where it says accepted emergency. I I could be reading it mixed up, but it seems to contradict a little bit, I think, what we just established in the very first conversation, the one that was down where it says. Actually, no, so this says to convene an emergency meeting to consider changes. So maybe it's similar to what Member Levy had mentioned, like maybe. To consider changes. So maybe it's similar to what Member Levy had mentioned, like maybe all policies indicate. This is our policy unless we change it. But does it muddy? Things up for? The community of saying what to expect. Do you know what I mean? Like if we just establish that when it's X, this is going to happen and we'll let you know when it's medium. That we recommend. And so this is saying. Like the monthly update, but we're saying we're going to do it. I don't know. Am I misreading? So it's the committee giving the monthly update, so not us giving a monthly update to the community. Okay, so maybe I'm just. Mixing it up between what our role is versus the ad hoc committee.
Right. I believe that means the ad hoc committee will.
Okay.
Although I I I think the ad hoc committee. In the mission that we sort of presented to the members, we'd said as that they would meet as needed. So. I feel like it's a little bit conflicts with that. Member Robbins.
Yeah, and the clarification. I think on this, when we had our discussion, and we work, we work really well as a committee. I'm very so happy working with rules and policy and our. Our conversations sort of moved through and we've had all these conversations as we went through and came back to revisit them. That particular one, we were. You know, I'm going to repeat it again. We were concerned that we're dealing with a virus that we don't know the future of. We don't know what's going to happen next week. We don't know what's going to happen next month. We need to have a committee, an ad hoc committee that has a relationship and collaborating together who's kept up to date. With what things are happening in the district will be learning along with us. So the meeting monthly piece seems to be. To make a tremendous amount of sense. So people know each other. They know how to have a conversation in the case of an emergency. And that we don't know what an emergency is going to be, but we sure better be ready for it if one comes up. So if that's not in our policy and we make a decision to do something that doesn't fit with a cut and dried, black and white piece. I can anticipate us running into quite the brick wall around that.
I certainly don't mind if they meet monthly. It's just different than how, different than the document that Member Stein wrote for that committee. Member Gazy.
Let me just say, we worked on it in committee, so it did change and that we changed that. That was this. This is not from. What Member Stein added was what he heard from our committee. But we worked on it or addition, some of them, Leila. Put into suggestions, some of them we put into areas where we thought they were not necessary because they were repetitive or confusing.
Okay, I mean, I'm talking about a different document, but. That was presented to the people who we were asking to serve on the ad hoc committee. Member. Gazy.
I'm just wondering if paragraph four should be. Situated above except in paragraph three, our current three. So that we state right out that they're going to be expected to review the metrics. And. Propose amendments to the school committee. And then that last. Except in emergencies. It just seemed to me to. Read smoother, more smoothly that way.
Okay. I have no issue with that. Anyone have an issue with moving those? Nope. Okay, let's put them up, put that up there. Okay, moving on now to this paragraph starts with the advisory committee will determine future regular meeting times. Member Gazy, I just looked over at your hands up. Was it still up or up newly up? You're muted. I think from before. You're still muted. Here. Member Gazy.
I don't think that that's really necessary right now. Because we've already determined future meeting times. And. So maybe just append. The second sentence of that paragraph, the COVID ad hoc policy is governed by the same laws. To the paragraph that we just moved up.
Okay, put those together.
Yeah, put those together and move that and delete the part that says. The committee will determine future regular meeting times. I don't think we need to do that because we've already got that sort of going.
Okay.
We've said that there will be regular meeting times.
Okay.
I'm sorry, just to confirm, so. Uh huh. And then move that second. Sentence as a part of.
The paragraph we just moved up.
Okay, got it. Okay, so I'm actually going to. Accept that suggestion. I just. Wanted to do it as a suggestion so that I can unaccept it if people. Want to look at it again.
Okay. So we're now up to the goals, yes. Member Levy.
Sorry, I might be jumping ahead. I'm in the goals section, but. Sorry. I'm good with the goals. I have thoughts on when we get to continue to mitigate COVID risks. So if somebody has thoughts about goals before we get here. Then. You should go with those people.
Okay. I don't see. I'm going to put your hand down, Member Gazy, because it keeps confusing me. But feel free to put it back up if you need to. I don't see anybody else, anyone else with something in this goal section before we get down to those last two bullets?
No.
Okie dokie, you are up, Member Levy.
Okay, thanks. So. I think to bring this in line with the CDC and Desi's recommendations and also what we're offering, it sounds like. I would suggest that this read. Continue to mitigate COVID risks. I can put this into. Continue to mitigate COVID risks for children and families through a multi-layered approach. That includes and then putting vaccination first to the comment that was made by Member Robbins. So that includes vaccination. Symptomatic testing. And responsible monitoring of symptoms. My understanding is that given what we are moving towards. And those are the. Maybe we want to say something in here about enhanced ventilation as well.
Yeah.
And I can, if you want, Member Seraphie Cox, I can add, I can just copy and paste in as a comment. Is that helpful? Would you help me just put it into the?
I I think you can put it directly in.
Okay, let me get.
If you can do it as suggestions, that that would be best.
She trusts you, Member Levy.
It's such a tiny font, I can't see it.
Sorry, I didn't know why I did that. I'll change it. So vaccination. What did I? But what did I say? Ventually, what did I say? Enhanced ventilation? Ventilation, that's a tricky word to spell. Ventilation. All right, I'll change the font.
Do we want access to vaccination clinics in there or we're getting rid of that?
Is that we can say that to be more specific about. The vaccination.
Hence ventilation. So you're taking out the pool testing, you're taking out the contact tracing.
Because I think we're no longer doing.
Yeah, exactly. Should there be a mention of the sewage? Treatment. Testing at a later date or just? It's not real yet, so don't say it.
I don't know. The answer to that. Is that? That's. That's going to be a part of our. There it goes, bigger. Continue to mitigate COVID risk for children and families through a multi-layered approach that includes. Vaccination. Enhanced ventilation. Wastewater testing.
Wastewater testing as it comes online. Or something. Since we don't have it online.
Lisa, do you know? When it's start, I do you know when it's starting? I mean, I think it's starting. It may already be starting or it's starting very soon. Because we've contracted through June 23.
They have been doing some already. I don't know the exact start date. I would have to ask the commissioner.
So maybe we just.
For the wastewater you're referring to?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Okay, and then the other thing that I'll say, just while I have the floor and I see other hands, is that then I think we take out this next. Sentence speak about members are expected to report exposures, respond to contact tracers, report positive COVID tests and symptoms. And observe required quarantines. We, I think that seems like with Desi, that's going away. Is there anything that we need to keep in here? It seems like no to me, and that would be a question for Lisa or others. I don't think Member Stein is here anymore.
I know with our data tracking, we would still want to have communication. If there's been positive cases, just so we can have an idea. On trending.
So keep the expected to report exposures. Or.
Cases, positive cases.
Okay, but we were not, we don't, we're not paying attention. It seems like we're not paying attention to exposures anymore. Is that right?
We will track that in our data.
Okay.
But I don't know if you need to have it here. That is something we will look at.
Okay, then let's.
Not the intensity of the contact tracing like we have done before, but we will monitor it.
So does this work to say members of the MPS community are expected to report exposures, positive COVID tests and symptoms, and to observe? Required quarantines?
Sounds good to me.
Required protocols instead of quarantines because that could shift again. Can I offer that?
Sounds good.
And so just to clarify in wastewater testing, we have DPH funding through next June. After that point, you know, I don't know what will happen with it. So we're building that in here, but. I just want to be transparent that I don't know how. I know it will certainly go through June 23. I don't know.
And I'll just say that all these changes I made are, we can undo them if the hands that are up don't like them. It's just suggestions.
Okay, anything else in this? I'm sorry, Member Robbins.
I'm not sure. I'm confused again about process because I I did have my hand raised at the beginning of this and I thought that the protocol was to wait and be called on, but. I also feel comfortable with people just sort of sharing as they're walking through, but I like clarity about how we're doing that. And I wanted to add, I appreciate the adding of the vaccinations. In there, I would like to propose that we also add up to date boosters. That really worries me and. I worry that children who've only been vaccinated. Once and have the opportunity be boosted after that. I don't know what the options are specifically for the age groups or whatever, but. With all the different variants, I would hope that we would want to support that. Lisa would be the expert on the feedback on that. And then the wastewater testing. We were told originally with the wastewater testing that we couldn't do it in North Hampton because our water comes through from Williamsburg and Haydenville. So. Mayor, when we do have that together, could we possibly have a representative who could explain how that will work? So the public understands it as well.
Sure.
Thank you.
And I I know that the Department of Health and Human Services has been pushing very hard for boosters and has been running clinics and running clinics and schools and really encouraging. Everyone to get, you know, the the full. The both vaccinations and and the available boosters for the different age groups.
And let's put that in there.
What do you mean? I mean, we have up to date boosters is here. Was put in. If I remember, I think there's a member Levy, maybe there's a member Seraphie Cox. Member Goldman.
Yes, I really. Appreciate the changes to this, and I would like to suggest also entering after enhanced ventilation. Air filtration. Thank you.
Member Gazy.
Do we need to vote on this section now, or should we go on to the next section? Since we seem sort of. In compliance on this. Piece, or do you want to just go through like we're doing and vote the whole bit? Shebang at the end.
Oh, yeah, Member Seraphie Cox.
My suggestion would be that we go through like this and and if folks have like blocking concerns about anything that's being changed. That they flag that so that we can. Vote on that separately, but little changes like this, we don't have to vote on every single thing. I don't.
Then. I'm going to suggest that we move on to the types of masks. I know that, remember Levy. Likes happy mass. There was a change. We had taken out the et cetera. I would, in the first line, so I would. Delete the or. Put KN95. And. Something like other high quality masks.
Yeah. I was gonna suggest. Or other masks of equal or higher quality. Do you want me to paste that in, Member Seraphie Cox, or do you have it?
Or other masks of equal or higher. Okay. Got it. Oh, I didn't do that as a suggestion, but. I'm not hearing. Other concerns, so.
Then we've done this section already that comes next.
I ask a quick question about the change, though. I. I like the change. I guess my question is, will there be lack of clarity for folks in the community? About what is of equal or higher quality? And so do we need to list the masks that are not allowed, like cloth masks or gaiters or? That just might help bring some clarity. And I don't know what all those would be. Like. Like certain, certain layers, like lacking layers of cloth masks and things like that. And I I wonder if either Lisa or somebody else. Could advise if folks think we do need to include that language.
Lisa, do you have any guidance on that?
So with the gaiters, we had flexibility with students who were not. Able to wear a mask of snugly fitting mask to have two layers of the gaiter. So I would recommend it being a surgical mask three or higher. Unless you want to keep the two with the gaiters in the event that a student's not able to wear a mask.
I think we name our exceptions later, right? In the policy. Do we?
I can't. I'll look.
Maybe, maybe. Maybe, maybe Lisa, instead of listing all the masks here that we shouldn't use, do you have a language that would help us for the, or, or other mask of equal or higher quality? Do you just, I just heard you say like of X layers or more?
Oh, if what we've purchased for ASTM ones, twos, it's free layers or more for the surgical mask, so why would do three layers or more?
Oh, but, okay, so we're suggesting that there are other masks out there that are just as good as these masks, like surgical N ninety-five, KN ninety-five, that are easy for kids to wear and, and very.
The surgical masks are the disposable mask that we offer. And those that we have on hand are three layers or higher. Three or more layers.
So, or other masks of three or more layers.
I'm sorry, my dad's internet is being really awful right now, so I.
You want me to, do you want me to do it?
Yeah, sorry.
That's okay. I can't tell what's happening. With three.
Mayor, I think we're ready to move on from this section.
Okay, thank you. So, oh, Member Gazy, is your hand up again?
Yes, it is.
Oh, please.
I just wanted to say that although we already worked on the universal indoor masking requirement, I'd like to point out in the last sentence of the first paragraph there, it says, "Universal indoor masking does not include masking during approved mask breaks while eating or drinking or during outdoor recess, PE, outdoor sports, and outdoor learning." I would take out the PE because I think that that might be confused by, you know, I know that people teaching PE in gyms, if there's a you know, inside in the gym, I, I just don't think that that goes out there, but all the outdoor stuff is fine.
Great, Member Goldman?
Um, I would like to suggest adding sleeping. That masking is not required while sleeping when there's a mask mandate because that is the, is that the case in the preschools? That masking is not required?
Yes.
I think.
Yes.
Yes.
We need to specify that it's sleeping in preschool so that a teenager doesn't say like, I'm gonna take a nap, I'm gonna take.
Well, there are actually other children that need accommodations at a higher grade level, so I wouldn't specify. Great.
Thank you.
Anything else in the section which we have already gone over, but? Member Sophie Cox?
Just that I think I think the, the heading is confusing. And I would like to make a suggestion about how to redo it, but I want to kind of like think about that visually as I'm writing it, and then come back to it and show you what I've done, if that is okay.
Everyone okay with that? Member Goldman, is your hand raised again or from before?
Both?
Okay.
Also, this says this part we added that's in red, "When Hampshire County elevates to medium for two or more weeks, a communication will go out." I actually oh, no, that totally makes sense. Okay, I was just saying that actually even coming out of high and into medium, I would I would still like to encourage people to wear masks, you know, whenever we're in the medium zone, whether we've hit high or not, and whether we're going into higher, coming out of high, I think, encouraging masks.
Making it. To medium?
Yeah, just that, yeah. Now, and if other people agree with that. If you don't, please speak up. Thank you.
Member Miller, did I see you raise your physical hand before? No? Okay. Okay. Member Levy?
Sorry. I don't want us to take more time if we don't need to take more time. I'm still thinking about Member Stein's comment, and I'm sad that he's not here to contribute to the conversation about keeping, I, I think we need the ors in order to meet what folks are asking for. But his comment about how we then have this lack of clarity that we're still sort of able to be as wishy-washy as we were before is sitting with me, and I'm wondering if anybody has a suggestion or a thought about that. I, I don't have a good solution. I do want clarity and transparency, and I also know, as members have said, that there are going to be unknowns and we're going to need to respond. And that's why we've got these experts. So if there's a way to say all of that, but still have more clarity and transparency and be less wiggly, I would, I just wonder if folks have thoughts about that.
Thoughts about wiggliness, anybody? Oh, yeah, Member Davis, is that your hand?
Yeah, my, my actual hand went up quicker before the little little orange hand is, um. I think in answer to that, I think the reassurance for me from a policy comes from the assurance that we're, we're consulting with the folks that are the experts. That this is our policy to the extent that we know what we're dealing with. And should something change that we have questions about, we have on hand and regular meetings with doctors and scientists and nurses and those that can help us find our way in some new scenario. I mean, that, that's the kind of thing that assures me that like all through all of this, that now we have so much more, we're saying that vaccinations and boosters and ventilation and everything are there. We're going to keep you in touch when it's medium. We're gonna tell you what the wastewater says. That said, should I'm not sure where all this goes, where, where I can't remember where the little spot was that you're referring to, Member Levy, but somewhere with that or, right?
Yeah, it's just.
Or as, as advised by the and then we relist the specifically the, the folks that were you know, we reiterate who we're consulting with. That it's not just our gut or our emotions or something like that. That's all I was not sure if that's helpful. That's what reassures me is that we're consulting with those that know.
Um, is Member Gazy?
I'm pretty much okay with that. Maybe in that last paragraph, when school committee determines that universal masking should be implemented based on the recommendations of the ad hoc committee superintendent or other. I don't know, I, I could move a sentence around and maybe it would read better. Putting, putting the the experts first, but it sort of seems to cover everything to me, and my feeling is I'd like to move on to get some of the other ones. I don't know, we could bat around that bush, but it doesn't seem terrible to me.
No.
Member Sophie Cox?
Yeah, I just want to highlight that there was some discussion about needing to define school data as it relates to students and staff absences. And, and of course, you know, this is a concern because of the continuity of, 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 of learning that needs to happen. So, a member, sorry. Attorney Taylor had said that she agreed that this needs to be better defined and suggested some specific data. I'm sorry, some specific language that is in the comment there. And I'll, I'll read it out loud now. Northampton School District data indicates increased COVID nineteen positivity rates and absenteeism due to COVID nineteen positivity rates among students and staff collectively that is above X percentage. Attorney Taylor said, "I don't know what the percentage would or should be, but I do know that one absence is different than ten percent of students and staff being out." So I, you know, I, I'm curious if anyone on the call who was involved in the decision to you know, because there was an absenteeism issue last year, and there was the, the decision to reinstate masks at that time. If, if they might shed some light on that. And with the caveat that we may not know that percentage right now, and I would be okay passing the policy without that piece right now, but wanting to get clarity about that and, and perhaps add it in later.
Okay, I feel like Lisa's the only person who could possibly provide that answer to you. Lisa, I don't know if you can.
Not at this time, Mayor.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Then I think, then I think I, I'm, I'll leave the comment in there just so we continue to have, you know, the documentation of that, but I I think that we should leave it as is for now.
Okay. Member Miller?
I was just gonna say that I think, you know, it's clear that there are many that do not completely trust the Department of Education or the CDC, but I think that the current what we've got right now in terms of going to the high level and putting out clear sort of warning that when we get to medium that this is coming, if we get to high, I'm comfortable with that. I think the number of medication things that we have listed are pretty good because I think that our vaccination rates in, in Northampton have been high. And that's the most important thing to me is the vaccination rates. So I'm pretty comfortable with this. I think that it will be very helpful to have the wastewater information when we can get it, and I do think actually what you just mentioned, Member Sophie Cox, about the percentage of absenteeism that will help be with us being clear and direct to the community. So I'm okay with it as this, in this way, with a little wishy-washiness. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Member Robbins?
About the absenteeism, and I appreciate the, always appreciate the, the for having a, a metrics around it and having numbers for what we do. But it comes back on the superintendent, and we talked about this a little bit at our rules and policy. It's, you could put a percentage in, you could put a number in, but if the superintendent and the principals can't find people to teach the kids, or if there aren't kids in front of the teachers, it's pretty subjective, and nobody really knows if we have a surge in the sixth grade or we have a surge in the high school, it's, it's a bleak day, and I really feel strongly that that needs to be the superintendent's call, and we, we need to be thoughtful and open to the superintendent saying, "I don't have subs." For teachers to be required to cover for other teachers when they're still handling their own teaching loads and becomes a union issue, it's, just gets super, super messy, and I, I anticipate that that will happen to us. So I feel really comfortable about saying that that's a superintendent's call, and we heed it.
Okay. Yep.
Sorry, I have a question from Member Robbins. It was your comment originally, Member Robbins, that brought this question up, so was there other clarity that you were looking for?
No, I don't think I met a metrics in terms of percentage, so I do want to clarify that, and the, the clarity was, I think that we were going to ask the superintendent to give us the data on the absentee rates, and we've already covered that earlier in the document, I believe.
Okay, then I will I will resolve this comment then.
Okay. Anything else in this section?
Glenn, when we're talking about the communication, is it too soon to mention the website? Because I know, I know Dr. Pearson Campbell has been working on that, but I'm not sure how close it is to fruition.
Dr. Pearson Campbell, did you have?
We are working on the website. We did a little bit of changes, but my goal is to finalize after September first, after we open schools. I've been working with Molly McLaughlin on our website to make it more clearer, and so that's one of my, my, my goals. After, after we open school and I have everybody in leadership roles, so my goal is like September first.
Oh, maybe then just other, leave it as it is, other methods as determined by the superintendent.
Can I ask a clarifying question, Member Gazy? I, because people were saying we want to have a dashboard or a website where people can go to see what the levels are based on our wastewater and based on all the other things, but to me, that's different from what this section is saying, which is saying how we're going to notify that whether universal masking is, is in place or not. And I think for me, I don't want people to have to constantly check a website. I want us to be actively notifying them. I see people.
I, I agree that other methods are primary, but you know, you know, just like that flashing banner that the website currently shows like we're actively hiring.
Right, yeah, so is that even a possibility for us to have a dashboard that gets updated regularly?
Dr. Pearson Campbell, were you gonna respond?
My thought was to send letters, whether it's medium or high, to parents, just like we said on note home for, for anything else. And then also too, if it's medium-high, that we can add a note on our website so people know that it's high or medium. And then also too, if it's medium high, that we can add a note on our website so people know that it's high or medium. So when they open it up, it'll be right there. There is a page on the website talks about COVID, which is, it's just on a separate page, not on the main page. And that's, that's, I think that's the reason why I want to look at the website to be much more clear. So people don't have to navigate from one screen to another screen. But, but my goal is to send letters out, um, that parents know. Also, if I have to do a phone call using our frontline system, so that parents know that please, you know, it's medium or high, please put on the mask if, if you're able to. It's about that for full of communication.
Members, Seraphie Cox?
Yeah, um, I wanted to. Bring up a, a, a comment that member Robbins had, had put in here as well. Asking for a caveat in bullet two to maintain masks where data indicates unstable levels in nearby communities or immediately after a holiday, so, sorry, a school holiday or break. And member Robbins, I don't know if, if that is still a, a. Suggestion you would like to make, it's in the second bullet, Mayor. Around the word weeks.
Okay, there we go.
So can I respond to that?
Yeah, of course.
Okay, so that is one of the, the conditions that a number of districts have taken into account, which is our highest vulnerability times are when kids come back from a holiday. And we know that under our own experience. So if there has been increased transmission, increased rates of children falling ill in nearby communities, pretty much bet that our children are come, gonna come under that same heading. I know that that is an unpopular suggestion for people who want there to be no masking at all under any conditions. But I still, I, I still think about what are we doing the absolute best we can to preempt children and families becoming ill from COVID? And it still feels as though the policy that we've created is post fact. And I understand that that might be the majority that people feel comfortable with. That there's an element in the community that feels that that's where we could, we, we could be going. And my, my concern still rests with our protecting our vulnerable members of our community. And I don't think that we've done a very good job of that so far, so that's my suggestion. I don't expect that it would stand.
Can you clarify what your suggestion is?
Yeah, ma- maybe member Robbins, if you could just like write in, either in that comment that you made or in the document itself, the specific language that you're suggesting.
I could write in, but I can barely read it, Emily.
What do you mean, you can barely read it?
On the screen, um, and I, I have, I have to get, yeah, I have to get it out of the document to do that.
Yeah, on your, on your own screen is what I'm.
But I've been, I've been working, we were told to work on our separate drafts and that's what I've been.
But in the meeting, we can work on.
I can go, I can go back and pull that up and put that in there, yes.
Yeah, because during the meeting, we can work on it collaboratively. Might I suggest that while member Robbins is doing that, I just present what the kind of clarity thing that I did in terms of the headings?
Yes, please.
Okay, so, um, so you're actually right there. So I, I took that paragraph out that says universal indoor masking requirement and I put it down below. So that then this section starts with just universal indoor masking will be required and then when, blah, 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 blah. I might also suggest that we put the word when after required and take it out of each of the bullets. So that it's clear that it is. A conditional. Thank you, my lady. And then at the bottom, I, where I pasted that paragraph back in, I retitled it definition of universal indoor masking requirement. So those are the changes that I made. And then I like made it all the same font and took out all the yellow and.
We like that. Member Levy.
I guess my question is, we're saying when we're going to require universal masking before we define what it is? And it just, I think for me, like I get the heading was not, I, the heading was confusing. But to me, I would take the paragraph you mo- you moved down to the bottom that says definition of universal indoor masking requirement, put that up at the top and then say universal indoor masking will be required when? If other people disagree, I, I don't feel strongly, I just, I, to me, it feels hard to, to say when we're going to do something before we've defined what it means.
Okay, I, yeah, that's fine with me.
Okay.
And, um, member Levy, if you just want to make that change, I'll go ahead and approve those.
Any objections to those changes and movement? Okay. All right, anything further on this section? Okay, so, or can we move on to reasonable accommodations? Okay, I'm seeing yeses, okay. Any, oh, it keeps moving, anything, um, anything in this reasonable accommodation section? That then, do we want to tackle the form now? No, okay. All right, seeing nothing in here, how about protocol? Here's a font change for you. Protocol for violations of this policy. Member Seraphie Cox, is your hand up anew? No, member Levy.
So I guess this is just a question, uh, and I don't mean to suggest that. I, I guess it's a question about what happens when people violate our school policies. The feedback that we've received from some in the community is that. Students shouldn't miss out on learning. If they violate this policy and I guess it's a question I want to raise, I don't feel like I have an answer to it. Uh, we do in, 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 I think, expanding the exemptions. I think we will make it easier for students who really feel like they need an exemption to get one. Uh, I hope that's the intent anyway on my part, but it's a question of whether this is a typical protocol for our policies to say if you violate this policy, then you could be removed from the school. Or if we take that out and we simply say. Sorry, I have it written down somewhere, but I, uh, lost it. Yeah, I don't know. Okay, I'll just make it up as I go. And now I'm looking at too many screens. Determine whether an exception is appropriate. I mean, we have the consult with the caregivers to, I, I just wonder if we should say we should consult with the caregivers to determine the, the best next steps. But I, it's a question and, and I, I just raised it as a question and I'm curious what people's thoughts are.
Okay, member Gazy, is it to, to that question?
No, my hand was just above this. I was going to ask that see below for district request for mask accommodation form be put in bold so that it wouldn't slide from people's eyes if they need it.
Okay, great. Member Goldman.
Thank you, uh, thank you, member Levy, for, can you hear me by the way, because I switched? Okay. For that consideration and I actually would like to hear from Superintendent Pearson Campbell about your, your view and recommendation around violations of the policy. Thank you.
To me, I think it's, will be, uh, working with the caregivers and, and the student and the principal, because there might be a reason behind why they don't wear the mask. And so I think that should be something that we can work together. Um, on, on that, on that realm. Because it could be a, a situation that we really haven't asked the student why they're going to wear a mask. And we can also bring in the, the school adjustment counselor or, um, the school psychologist to find out the reason why. They might have a medical form, they just haven't completed it. So I think, and we need to add more clarification, so maybe we should be a step one. Have we contacted the, the school adjustment counselor, step two, have we contacted the family physician? Step three, have we contacted the caregivers? So then we were just not just jumping, but there's a process. So that's, that's just my thought process.
Uh, I appreciate that, thank you.
Can you repeat? I'm just gonna write it down, can you repeat what you said? So I've got, we've got caregivers, school adjustment counselors.
Who's psychologists, do they have a release to the doctor? Because they might have talked to the doctor, but didn't respond back to the school. And then also work with the director of student services and also to work with the director of nursing. So it's a whole team approach, so there's a balance.
Okay, member Seraphie Cox?
Um, just wanting to highlight the part of, um, member Levy's question that's about. How we normally communicate about violations of policy. Um, and so I am looking in our policies because I'm pretty sure that there is a policy somewhere that talks about how we deal with violations of our policy. So FYI that I am, uh, looking for that answer.
Okay. Um, okay, well, while that's being looked for, can we move on to additional COVID-19 mitigation measures?
Um, I wonder, did, um, member Robbins, um, is she in a place where she wants to present her, her suggestion?
Sure, I have to go back and find this again. I have like three copies of this open, so it's a challenge. So if you go back to that place, maybe this is the wrong one. Can you see where I put it in?
Did, okay, you put it in this document?
Yeah.
Oh.
It's really easy to get lost in here.
Uh huh.
It's a little. I'm not seeing any changes that you made, member Robbins.
Oh, I just put it in there, so I wonder what happened to it. Okay, come back to me.
Okay. Um, okay, uh, additional COVID-19 mitigation masks? Anything in this section? Sorry, I, oh, you go, member Seraphie Cox.
Oh, um, just that, um, um, Leila had a comment under, uh, here. Sorry, Leila had a comment here that says, under the related policies, I will, I will review these. This is from June. Uh, I am concerned about the potential classroom protocols and potential privacy issues, whether they are. Uh, my, my, my guess is that she reviewed it and made the changes that she wanted to make. So I, I think that this is an old, uh, comment and I can, uh, resolve it. Because this is from the beginning of June and she has touched this document many times since then.
Okay. Um. Member Levy, did you have something?
So, yeah, and this is, I don't know if Lisa's still here. But this is a question about just what's been changed, given the CDC's and Desi's new guidelines. I think that we're, we're not in step with them here now. But I'm not sure, so regardless of vaccination status, individuals who meet the current MDPH. Do we say what that means, by the way? I think we need to say that up here, if we're gonna say Massachusetts Department of Health, we need to put in parentheses, MDPH. Okay, so criteria to le- to leave strict isolation after five days must continue wearing securing fit, securely fitting mask at all times on days six to 10. I think that's still right, but then regardless of vaccination status, individuals who are exposed must wear a mask for 10 days following the exposure. Actually think that that's been changed. Can somebody, Lisa, are you here to confirm or deny that?
Let me just find the language. You're with me. Says all exposed individuals may continue to attend programming, those that can mask should do so until day 10.
Okay, so, so that's still right then. Regardless of vaccination status, individuals who are exposed must wear a mask for 10 days following the exposure. Individuals who are unvaccinated must quarantine at home for at least five days following exposure. I actually think that they took that away, am I wrong about that?
You are not wrong.
Okay, so we just strike that or what change should we make to that? We should take that part out. And same with, I think they also are saying individuals who are unable to wear a mask must quarantine at home for the full 10 days. They're, they took that out too, right?
Yes, I believe they did. It's not in the paperwork that I have.
Okay, so. I, I do think it's important for us to be in step with what the others are asking, but it also feels hard to know that we're saying that people are exposed and they're just gonna show up. So I'm just raising this for, I don't know if we take this out or not, seems like we should, but curious what people think.
Member Gazy.
Thank you, um. I was on this part where they must wear days six to 10, I thought that there was other guidance that said unless they tested negative on day six, then they didn't have to mask. And so I wondered if that should be appended. Because if they're negative on day six, they can unmask.
Um. Are you that?
I'm at the CDC guidance, um, I took it from the section of Lisa's slideshow and they say they have, they may return to programming after day five, should wear a high quality mask through day 10. You know, and then it says if the individual's able to mask, they must do through day 10. If the child has a negative test on day five or later, they do not need to mask. If the individual is unable to mask, they may, may return to programming with a negative test on day five or later. So I think that, yeah. Unless they receive a na- yes. That's what I think.
Okay.
And then there's this. You know. I think that all that CDC language should be in here. Because it says, when they're talking about exposures, all exposed individuals must, can attend programming as long as they're asymptomatic. Encourage them to ask mask to day 10, so that's after exposure, hold on. Is there something about exposure? I guess there's nothing on exposure now in, in this. We used to have that, that classroom, oh, maybe it's down in classroom policies after exposure.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. So I'm fine as, as long as it says is, unless they receive a negative test.
Okay, member Seraphie Cox?
I just wanted, uh, to let you know that, um, member Robbins, um, suggestion. um, suggestion has popped up. It's the last bullet of those, those bullets of, you know, the conditional.
Here. Everyone see that?
Uh, where is?
The school, the school committee in consultation with those advisees named in this document reserves the option of maintaining universal masking where transmission data indicates unstable levels in nearby communities or immediately after a school holiday or break.
Wait. What is unstable levels? Is that a red? Is it a green, orange?
Yeah, I, I'm I mean, this isn't my suggestion. My, my opinion of this is that it, it, it's not the right language.
How would you amend the language?
Honestly, I feel like we have already reserved this right. Um. Based on um, you know, that we have a recommendation from the ad hoc committee. Um. So I, I think perhaps what I would suggest doing is, you know, these are some specific um, situations that it probably wouldn't be a bad idea to um, highlight to the community that that is something that we're thinking about, especially the after school holiday or break part. So my suggestion would be to put that into the previous bullet. Um, so that, you know, the school committee determines the universal masking, da, 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 da. Such, uh, um, for example, or including but not limited to uh, a school or holiday break or when uh, transmission levels in neighboring communities warrant.
Why don't you use the language there?
Because unstable levels, uh, it doesn't make sense to me.
Can you say again the end of your sentence, member Sarah Cox?
Um, warrant such actions or something like that.
Okay. Okay with that?
Hmm, yeah, that's okay.
Can we call this increases in transmission rates or I guess transmission data? Sorry.
Well, no, um, I think in I, I wanna say it as generally as possible because it's like it's gonna be up to the, you know, the committee to make that determination. I, I just want to highlight to the community that this is possible. So, um. I would change it to rates because um, an increase in data means that you have more data. It doesn't mean that the data is different.
I think your problem is gonna be with that. It's very vague when it says unstable levels. What is an unstable level?
Yeah, that's, I'm suggesting this language in place of the, the next bullet. I would cut out that next bullet. That's my suggestion. I'm wondering, member Robbins, if that still um, feels like it gets to what you were trying to highlight.
More or less. Okay.
There's something grammatically not right about this and I'm trying to fix it, but.
Please do. It was off, off the seat of my pants. Is that what they say?
We like to mix metaphors in this committee, so. Um, okay. Can we, is everyone okay with this? And can we move back down to where we were before? Member Gazy, is your hand up again or no?
Yes, it is.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Okay, moving back down.
Yep.
Um. We were at regardless vaccination status and we added unless they receive a negative test on day five. Um. The next sentence, regardless of vaccination in individuals who are exposed must wear a mask for 10 days. Isn't that gone? That sentence?
I thought we just asked Lisa that and she said no. Is that, did I misunderstand?
Well, when I look at the um, isolation and quarantine.
On the CDC paperwork, the wording is people who have known or suspected exposure to COVID-19 should also wear well-fitting masks around others for 10 days from their last exposure regardless of vaccination status or history of prior infection.
Okay. I was, I was confused because I was reading the um.
I think it's that they no longer have to isolate. They still have to mask, but they no longer have to isolate or quarantine.
Okay.
Or, yeah, they don't have to quarantine if they don't have symptoms and they should mask.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Member Dana's?
So I, what I just heard is sorry, I was talking into the nothing, um, that they should mask and not must anymore. Is that a change? That, what, what Lisa just read? Um, that if they've been we have on ours that it says we, they must mask if they've been exposed. But it sounds like what, what it says now is the word should. Is that different? I think that's a strong recommendation or something, but is that a, now they, is that a change? I'm wondering.
Both the language on the CDC document and also uh, the DPH updates say the word should.
To me, should means you really ought to do it. But it's not a must, so. And that's something that makes the enforcement different. If we're, if we're trying to follow the new guidance to the best of our ability.
So do you agree that it should be changed to should to match that language?
I mean, I'm not the seed, like my gut is, you, I really want you to wear the mask. If you've been exposed and you, and you haven't been vaccinated, but if we're following, I think, I think that we had agreed that we're trying to follow the new guidance. And so if, if that's what we're trying to do, then we have to, I'm feeling like we have to use that language, but um, maybe that's other people may have another thought about that.
Member Sarah Cox, did you have a thought?
Um, I wanted to ask um, Lisa Safran what the current plan was for, for this question. My understanding from what she had said before was that students actually uh, aft- uh, up until 10 days, students wouldn't even be in school.
Now, students.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is exposed. I'm sorry.
Yeah, no.
Okay. Um. Holly, did you have something on this point? Or something different?
No, I'm sorry, I forgot to take that down. I'm, my next comment is down in classroom policies after exposure.
Okay, so let's resolve. So uh, in the document, it's now been changed to should to match the CDC language. Is there an objection to that? Okay, I don't see any. So moving on from here. Um, which section, member Gazy, was it when changes to the individual?
Class, classroom policies after exposure.
Oh, okay. So this kinda list of stuff here. Um, we're all okay with this part?
Well. Um, if we've just said that af- in the former section that you've got a mask for 10 days after exposure. Don't you think that it should say classroom policy sees after exposure? I'm assuming that this is talking about a kid that's positive that's in class and then goes home sick or something. And so that's an exposure in school. Should it say that you mask for 10 days? Or mask for five days and then have a negative um, antigen test? Because that's what we said up above.
I think this has been changed by the CDC, hasn't it?
Right, because here, regardless, up above, we said regardless of vaccination status, individuals who are exposed should wear a mask for 10 days following the exposure. So I think the first thing is classroom policies after known exposure should, in school should be, you gotta wear a mask for 10 days and monitor for symptoms unless you take a test on day six or whatever. That shows you're negative.
But classroom exposures aren't the same as necessarily close known exposures, right? I, Lisa.
I don't know. I don't know, so.
The classroom exposures would be getting back into the contact tracing.
But we're not doing contract tracing anymore.
Correct.
So is any of this relevant now?
Oh, wait, you, wait, it does say classroom students are required to wear masks for five days, so, and then they monitor. Um, I guess that's okay, cause it does say what I, I'm sorry, I I brought up something that didn't need to be brought up.
But all of these things that I just highlighted, is this still relevant, Lisa?
Isn't it redundant if it's already listed above?
Well, it's saying what we're gonna do if there's a known exposure in a classroom.
Um. Lisa, do you feel like you're able to answer member Levy's question about this section about school staff? Will monitor the classroom for?
Yeah, I'm just processing it. I haven't had that conversation yet.
We're throwing a lot at you.
So at least.
It is noted up above that people have an exposure. You know, um, they are to mask if they have a known exposure. What I would worry about is with um, lower levels of contacts in classrooms that were identifying people's personal health again. So I would like to sit on this if we could.
This last, I hear you. This last bullet, though, I think is no longer appropriate.
Yes, you can put that out.
So you want us to make a note here, Lisa, that says you're gonna get back to us about whether this is should be included?
Yeah, I would like to have a, a further conversation and get some more information.
Um, so if the goal is to vote on this today, should it be removed with a note for the ad hoc committee to um, discuss this, Lisa's on it as well, and then uh, then they could make a recommendation to insert it or change it and have it be back in this policy? I just fear voting for something that you know, having it in here, um, saying we're gonna go back to it seems the opposite of transparent for the community.
Could I ask a question?
Sure, of course.
Are you able to say, um, currently under review? And not and, and an amendment will be coming? Is that wording that you could use?
Um. Uh, we could, it's just whether people are, are sort of comfortable voting for something that we don't um, is sort of still in process.
We do have an ad hoc meeting on Monday.
Correct, yeah. Um. Okay, are we ready to go on to the next section? Okay, before we go on to the next, so I don't know if y'all remember, I'm supposed to be in a city council meeting and I've actually managed to drag it out for like two hours, um, by checking in with them, but I do have to switch over to that other meeting. So I, member Goldman has very generously offered to take over, so since member vice chair Agna is not here. Um, rules state the next senior member, and so since member Goldman uh, made the motion for this meeting, I asked if she would be willing to take over the meeting. Um, and she said yes, so I'm gonna hand it over to her very capable hands. Um, and uh, I hope when my meeting's over, you will not still be in this meeting, but I will check in and see, and I will come back if I can, but I very much hope that's not gonna be the case. Um, member Robbins, is this for me or is this?
It's for you. Can you tell us what the current composition of the ad hoc advisory committee is at this point in time?
It hasn't changed from last Thursday.
And are we working, are we working to expand that? Do you need some support in that?
Um, I hmm, uh, member Stein took it upon himself to email a couple um, epidemiologists, but as far as I know, they didn't respond. Um, if people know of uh, epidemiologists or, or other holes that you feel need to be filled in that committee, please send those names to me and I will contact people.
And do they, do they have to be people who live in Northampton?
Yes, according to our policy on ad hocs, it talks about residents.
So that makes it difficult, cause we can't actually grow a lot of epidemiologists. That seems to be kinda shooting ourselves in the foot on that one. Is there any way around it?
You'd be surprised. We actually have quite a few in Northampton, but um, that, I mean, that's what the policy states, so.
So if we have quite a few in Northampton, have we contacted them to ask them if they'd like to be part of this committee?
Uh, a few have been contacted and some have said no, and some, I don't know if, if mem- if they responded to member Stein and not the reply all, so I didn't see a response. I have not seen a response.
So are, I'm just asking, I guess, about who's supposed to be beating the bush looking for folks?
Um, if people have recommendations, I mean, we, it, it, the, the composition of the committee has quite a few public health nurses, has the, the school physician, it has a lot of folks on it. If people feel it's absolutely necessary to have an epidemiologist, then please send names to me. I've been looking around for names. But that are, the policy, which I didn't write, states that they are um, that ad hoc committees are That ad hoc committees are composed of residents.
Okay, I I'm just gonna remind us that the reason we are having this committee rather than Shack. Which I sounds like Shaq's kind of part of it is part of the committee, which is great. Is that people asked for experts in epidemiology. So. We really want to make sure that we we work hard to make that happen and that we have folks who are on a much higher level with. Um, knowing what the data is and how it impacts children in school. So thank you for that invitation and maybe we can put up that out to the community as well.
Um. Sure, how would you like that done?
Um. I don't know. I'm not on the PR piece of it. And we could say it tonight. We could say it at our next school committee meeting. Um, we could let the Gazette know if they contact you about this meeting that that might be something that we're. Looking for some input on. I'm I'm not really on that wavelength, but I do think it's incredibly important. That's what we said we were going to do.
Okay, member Agna is the spokesperson, so I will let her know that if the Gazette contacts her. Um, that she should share that.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, um, all right. So I'm signing up. So I realize I am sharing. I'm screen sharing this document.
I'm ready to screenshot.
Okay.
Okay, and I just heard. I just heard that you'd like me to. Oh, work on recruitment. I'm happy to continue to do that. It has been a little bit difficult. To get people, as you said, but I will continue to try. Okay?
Thank you. I didn't know you were back. Okay, thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Can everyone see my screen? Or see the document?
Can you maximize the document?
Yeah. Whoops. There we go.
And can you zoom in a little bit too, please?
Zoom in again. Is this good? Yeah. And I'll just expand this so I can see hands raised. Okay. And I believe this is where we're at at, um, the second point here on this page. Member Gazy.
Hi. Um. So I think we're ready to go down to do the Z's investigation and contact tracings. And so that first bullet needs to be eliminated because we're not doing it. Um. I think we still want the positive COVID cases reported to school nursing staff. Although I understand that they only. Report. School discovered cases. Right? That that they tested in school to the Desi. Um. Is that correct, Lisa?
Yes.
Yeah. Um.
Do you, Lisa, do you not want us to report outside cases?
Say again?
Do you not want outside cases reported?
No, we do want people to still let us know if they've tested positive. We won't be reporting to the Desi security portal where people were able to go online and see each district's data for the week. Anymore. We will be responsible for reporting any symptomatic testing that is done in the buildings. For DPH.
So can we say positive cases among staff and students should be reported to school nursing staff?
Yes.
Um. And after that, I think that's sort of the main part. That I have with that section.
What about the line that says maintain the ability to quickly mobilize supportive contact tracing efforts?
Well, I assumed that, um, I thought I heard Lisa saying that they. Were going to. Move in that if there was a sudden. That they would, they would, the nurses were trying to take care of that. Is that right, Lisa?
Yes, we will still be tracking data. If we do have to bring back more supportive contact tracing, we can.
Okay.
Okay.
So then the next one, if everybody agrees, would be ventilation.
Well. I just, to me, grammatically, this this section doesn't make sense to me. So what are we saying in section three? We're saying positive COVID cases among staff and students should be reported to school nursing staff. Okay. But this next thing doesn't make sense to me. Classrooms and extracurricular activities with individuals with tested positive for COVID-19 will be monitored to the emergence of new cases for a period of 10 days. So. For and who's doing this monitoring?
School nurses.
Is that true?
Are you referring that to be more contact tracing? Is that was at the intention of this line?
Uh. Oh, maybe we aren't doing that anymore.
Right. Are we do are we doing this bullet, Lisa?
I would remove that. We will be tracking data. But I I I don't think that's necessary to have in there.
Yeah, because then we have main. Maintain the ability to quickly mobilize contact tracing.
Right, and that's not a. That's not a complete sentence. So what are we trying to say here?
Wait, wait, wait. Sorry, the grammar police.
All right.
That's okay. I'm glad you're doing it. Um.
The district will maintain?
Sure.
Oops, something happened. I don't know what just happened.
I'm resolving comment, uh, um, changes above is what happened.
No, I I'm typing, but then it's crossing out as I'm typing. There we go. Okay, and then what's the last bullet trying to say? Evidence of transmission within a classroom or other school setting.
Um. Maybe it's, uh, the district will maintain the ability to quickly mobilize supportive contact tracing efforts if it is deemed necessary. Um, by evidence of transmission within a classroom or other school-based setting. Is that what we're trying to get at?
So does that mean that if someone on a sports team? Is exposed? Or test positive? That someone's gonna do contractors, uh, contact tracing for the whole team?
I thought it meant that if there was a cluster of cases. In a classroom or a cluster. On a sports team that then.
Because it never says cluster anywhere.
I know. Well, that was my understanding, Lisa.
I, you know, not understanding what you're coming with with the sentence, um. With the contact tracing not happening. We won't be actively doing it if there's a positive case on, say, a field hockey team. But we will, we will still be tracking the data if that makes sense to you.
Okay, then take that out. That last line. Because there's very limited contact tracing going on.
Okay, onward.
Any problems with ventilation?
Member Robbins.
Um, yes, I do have a problem with it. I I find this also very ambiguous. I my understanding of the ventilation, first of all, is I think John gave us the number of four air exchanges. And I believe that the rate that's recommended is higher than that. Um, maybe that's the best we can do, but it's looks like in this document, there were only going to use those air exchanges when there is a masking mandate. And. That again feels to me like after the horse left the barn. Um, it seems to be always a good idea to have. The CO2 levels down in a room at any rate. And kids don't get sleepy and the maybe the windows are open or whatever else that we can do to make that happen, but. I guess I would like to us to have language in there that says, I know that they're loud and I know it's hard to teach with them. But if it's after the fact and there's a masking mandate in place, it seems to me that that's too late.
Member Robbins, if we take out the second sentence in this paragraph, does that fix it?
No, because I think we also need to say that the district will direct staff to ensure that it is used. Because I know.
When a mask mandate is in effect?
Yes, I mean, I I know that it's horrible. It's horrible to try to teach for that noise in the back of the room, but. Um, if we're not going to mask, we do need to use other mitigation efforts.
Okay, and then what is the air exchange rate that you were thinking needs?
I believe it was five to seven. Lisa could probably, um, let us know a little bit more about that. Four for a full classroom of children is pretty low.
Um, I would.
Go ahead, members.
Please, sorry, sorry. Please go to, you know, Lisa as well, but um, I'll just. Tell you that I'm gonna look in the, um. Um, MOA, the memorandum of agreement from. Oh, my gosh, was it two years ago now? Um, that that we, um, came to with the union. It had very, very specific. Uh, ventilation numbers in it, so I'll I'll look that up.
Okay.
And those were, um, um, developed in collaboration with. Um, the unions ventilation expert.
But as this is still a moving target, maybe those are things we need to to revisit. Um, and I'm focusing on the layers of mitigation that we have in places. So we're not going to do masking. Then we need to really make sure we've got other pieces in place that keep kids and teachers safe.
Yes, the numbers that. We developed in collaboration with the MTA's ventilation expert. Were. Specifically designed. To that end and, um, and the ventilation expert from the MTA said, you know. Your. Your numbers are some of the best in the state, so. Um. I'm gonna, I'm gonna look that up.
Okay, all right. And can I just, I don't, you know, we we're gonna put a number in here and I'm hesitant to. Um, to vote on this number unless we have collaboration with an expert actually of our knowledge.
Uh, I I'm sorry, are you saying that?
I just, I'm not saying the MTA expert isn't terrific. I'm just saying I think it's something that we need to have. Um, some some corroboration on, is this the right number?
Yeah, yeah. All right, the other thing that I'll share is that, um, member Voss, a former school committee member. Um, school committee member at the time did extensive research on the ventilation and, uh, I mean, I. Um, certainly, we can, um, look for for other. You know, corroboration on that, but I I I will say, member Robbins, we did a lot of work on that.
I and I get that, but I I really do question it and I'm kind of serious about it, so. I mean, four, four would be maybe okay if the kids are masking, but maybe it's not okay if the kids aren't masking. That's my question.
Well, let's, is it okay if we hear what the number is from the MOA and come back to it when member Seraphy Cox has that information?
Yeah, but I don't know that that's gonna resolve the question.
But it might move us on just for the moment.
Maybe it might not resolve it for you, but for more of us, it might.
That's true.
Okay, so let's. Move on then while we're waiting for member Sarah.
Holly, you've muted yourself again. Member Gazy. Can you hear me?
Sorry, I'm having technical issues. Um, yeah, so while we wait for member Seraphy Cox, maybe we can move on to vaccination. Um. I remember that member Robbins really wanted to stress in our policy. The importance and primacy of vaccination. Is that true, Meg?
Yes.
Member Robbins, do you have your hand up anew?
No, sorry.
Member Seraphy Cox, do you have your hand up anew?
Uh, no, but, um, I did find the number, so whenever you're ready for that.
Okay. If you don't mind, I'd like to move us back up to four, so we, since we're. Still. Just having just left. Go ahead, member Seraphy Cox.
Uh, the number was 4.5. And that was, uh, when we moved to hybrid. Um. So that was March. Let me look at the ratification date. That was for the school year of 2020 to 2021. So yes, that was when, um. The first school year, um, after, um, after COVID started. So that is the number that I would suggest putting.
Member Davis.
Um, and, um. If that's the number, member Seraphy Cox, you're looking in the MOA, right?
Correct.
So. Without adding any complications to it. If that's something that's in a. A negotiated. Document, that's not something to, um, to lightly. Just change, right?
True, um, it is a memorandum of agreement that is no longer in effect. True. So, at, you know. Without.
We're referring back to it, but it's not something.
Exactly.
See, yes. Okay, because I didn't want to just.
Yeah, um, and it was. That number was included again in the version that we ratified. In April of 2021, so. Yep.
So could we at least have it at 4.5, knowing that an MOA included that in the past?
Yes, it's been changed in the document, perhaps you. Perhaps that hasn't, um, updated for you, but we have changed it to 4.5.
Member Levy.
I'm just wondering, member Robbins, if right now you have suggestions for what you would like to see this based on. Information you have.
I would like to see it based on current research and I don't have that. I know I have spoken to, um. Susan Voss about it, and she actually has done extensive research and I would welcome her advice on what she has discovered because she is. Much more of an expert about that than I am, but I am concerned. I think. Those numbers were created in a different setting and I'm also, I question how. Um, how that will be monitored as well, and I leave it in the hands of the district to make sure that that happens.
Thank you, member Robbins. Um, Annie, would you add ventilation to the agenda for the ad hoc subcommittee, please?
Uh, sure, uh, absolutely, yes.
Thank you. Uh, shall we move on to vaccination then? Any comments?
Um, oh, just that there's a a comment here from member Robbins asking that the last sentence of this paragraph be bolded. I don't know, member Robbins, if that is still what you would like to see there.
Gosh, it feels like a million years ago that we had this conversation. Um, I I it. Maybe that does make sense, whether anybody actually reads our policy close enough to get information to say that that vaccination piece is important. I think we did move the vaccination piece towards the top of what we're talking about. Um.
And that's sorry, member Robbins, um, I was still talking about the ventilation.
Oh, the ventilation. I'm so sorry.
No, no, I I I understand why you thought that.
Yeah.
Yes, apologies.
Yes, no, I see it. Yep. Thank you.
But you don't want me to, I bolded the last sentence of the vaccination one. Should I not do that?
No. I'm bolded.
Did, did Annie add that other question that we had to the ad hoc menu, the one about. In classroom policies? After exposure?
I did not, can you give me that language for that and I'll add it right now?
Uh, well, there was just questions. About that Lisa was going to research more on classroom policies after exposures. To make sure that we were compliant with all the best recommendations.
Okay, I'll add that tomorrow, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Gacy. Member Levy?
So I have a question about the vaccination piece. I share the concern that others have articulated that. At some point, it sounded like we were not being very clear that full vaccination means that. People have received the full dosage, not just one vaccine, but vaccines plus boosters. And I wonder if we want to say that here to make that clear, that. That being fully vaccinated means being, having received all doses and up to date boosters, or did we already say that and that's moot now?
I think we should say that.
Member Seraphie Cox? You're muted.
Thank you, a couple of things, just whenever we're done with the vaccination section.
We're done?
Okay, great, um, letting folks know that I got the link. For the very first paragraph and put it in, I wanted to put it in as a footnote at the bottom of the page. But it kept making me do an end note instead of a footnote. And that just seemed ridiculous, so I. If somebody else can put it in there as a footnote instead of just plunking it in the paragraph, that would be great. But that is there. And then. I, on the, I'm sorry to go back to that fourth bullet. I think that I just, it's the, you know, talking about when the. When the masks come off, it is where my cursor is, if you just click on my face, it'll go to that bullet. Yeah, a little lower, there we go. So here, where it says, you know, that we are going to talk, get the recommendation of the ad hoc committee. Superintendent or other public health officials. I feel like our other public health officials. Might be too broad here and like, we keep saying the ad hoc committee is the thing. Yeah, Shaq, that's, that's fine with me. But I didn't want it to just be like any public health official and from anywhere. So I, I appreciate that. And then. I did that one, and then I just kind of wanted to address a, an email that we received. That had asked for the. Criteria for masking exemptions to be expanded. And I was a little confused by that request because this policy and no policy that we've had before. Like, there's no criteria in here about what constitutes. An, you know, when somebody would get an exemption. It talks, also, the emphasis in here is not actually on exemption, it is on accommodation. And, and so my understanding was that. The, the various stakeholders that Superintendent Pearson Campbell had talked about earlier would talk about. Potential accommodations before they would talk about an exemption. But I, I guess I just wanted to kind of say out loud that I don't think we need to change the policy at all, that I just wanted to address. This concern that, that accommodations and, and exemptions so forth are determined by district administrators. That there's, you know, a process for that, and of course, there's the, yes, which we're probably just about to get to, the, the form. And so I'm sure that, that as we go through the form, it'll be more specified, but I just kind of wanted to. Address that more, more broadly.
Thank you. Member Gacy?
Yes, I was just going to suggest that we looked at the form because I think all of those issues are addressed there. The one that's appended at the end of the. Of the thing.
Yes, is there a particular page, there's, it's a three-page doc?
It's. No, it's the first, the first page up. Right where it says request for mask accommodation. Underneath the sort of fill in the blanks, there's the students and staff who are determined. To be unable to wear masks for medical or disability or behavioral. Issues. And then they have to document that. And. I think the first things that were listed were more accommodations. Like face shield or gator or whatever. But that, that's where we were.
Thank you, Member Levy?
Thanks, so I think that the changes, I think these are changes that were made to the first page of this. Request for a mask accommodation are really helpful in meeting what, Member Seraphie Cox, you were referring to in terms of what folks were asking for. To broaden this, but I don't think the next page then matches the broadening, so we're saying. That people are gonna be able to tell us if they have a documented medical disability and or behavioral need. But then down below, we're saying the person has to certify that they have a physical, medical, or mental impairment. And I think we should just match the language. Below, so that if we copy and paste. Medical disability, no, sorry. Medical disability and or behavioral need. I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna paste it down and see if that works for folks. As a student's healthcare provider, I certify that this person has a. Medical disability and or behavioral need that substantially, well, so then, and I would just say that, that. That requires an accommodation. Right?
Member Seraphie Cox?
Um, just that I know that Attorney Taylor worked extensively on this, on this form. So I, I definitely hear. What you're saying, Member Levy, and I want. I, I think my reading of them is, yeah, that's a good change, but I just want to highlight that. That Attorney Taylor is not here tonight, and so I would want, you know, we can pass this, but I would want to check with her to make sure. That, that the changes that we made are. Consistent with. You know, with the, the legal necessity.
Sure, I think for me, I totally hear that and agree. And what I think the, the feedback we received, which, which did resonate with me is that. There are people who have limits other than substantial major life activities that if face covering may cause harm or obstruct breathing, that would still make it necessary. For them to have a, an accommodation at Margaret, sorry, I'll stop talking because other people have their hands up.
Member Miller?
Um, it, first of all, it needs to include the word psychological. Because some of the disabilities are. Things as broad as autism spectrum. And that is not covered necessarily by, you can't just, it's not necessarily disability. I would say medical, psychological, not behavioral. I don't think that behavioral needs covers it, I don't think that's the issue, it's because there is some kind of. Difficulty. Learning difference. Things, but autism spectrum is included, sometimes for some kids, it's, and someone has spoken to this publicly. Speech impairments. Hearing loss. So if you, if you say medical, psychological. You can, you can say behavioral, but.
Can we say, you said learning, can we keep?
I would say learning differences or disability if that's used, but. I mean, I have to say, as a psychologist doing testing, we say. We say learning, learning disabilities all the time. But, so, yes, I agree, the language needs to be the same, but as long as medical and psychological. And maybe educational.
Member Robbins?
Thank you, thank you for that.
Challenges is a good word.
Thank you for that, yeah, but I feel like we need to be really specific and we need to. We need to have something that the criteria is approved. By a medical professional, because what we're, what we're opening up the window with that is any child who's on an IEP. Or any child who has, children have difficulties in all kinds of areas. We, we have to balance that with also keeping them safe when they're wearing masks. And I think I agree with you completely, I, we've always had these exemptions for kids who really need them. Whether or not people have known about them or followed up on them. I, I'm unaware and I hope that we're better at advertising what that is, but I don't want to put our principles in a position where. It's a parental choice that any parent could make, you know, my child is an, is an exception to this because I don't really want my child to be masked. And I'm not really sure that we can have a masking policy where there's an exemption for. Anybody who has difficulty wearing a mask, cuz that would include me.
Member Seraphie Cox?
Yeah, I, I, when I have heard Leila talk about this, she has talked about. The need for, to use the word disability because it is one of the protected classes. So I guess I would. I would suggest that we use the word disability, and then to. To Member Robbins' point, this isn't a statement by the caregiver of the child, this is a statement by the healthcare provider, so. You know, obviously, a, a parent could. Have a strong influence over their healthcare provider, but it's, you know, it's not just like a self. Self-certification. And then, separate from this paragraph, I have a question about the section above, so once we're done with this paragraph. If you can come back to me.
Okay, I will, Superintendent?
I was also thinking that maybe we have our specification lawyer to look at it. Because that might be helped with the wording about education disabilities. So that might be another aspect besides having Leila looking at it, so we can have both lawyers look at, at this document.
Thank you. How do we ensure that happens?
I'm meeting with Mr. Dixon tomorrow anyways, to, to, for his office, so I can have him connect with. Colleen, the attorney, and have her look at this.
Thank you.
So tomorrow.
Member Seraphie Cox?
Um, which section? Yep, um, where it asks like name of student, school, grade, etc., it asks for sex. If you go up. Yes, there, um.
Oh.
I just saw somebody change it to gender. It, it looks like maybe Member Levy is fixing this for us, thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent?
While we're still on this, do we, need, why do we need to know their gender in order to do this?
I mean, that was one question I had as well. I, I, unless there's a reason why we need it in there, I.
Yeah, why do you need to know?
I mean, the, the school knows the student's gender. You know, as they have identified it in their records, so.
Superintendent?
I'm sorry, I'm gonna put my hand down, I'm sorry.
No trouble, Member Seraphie Cox, okay. Any other comments for this section? For the accommodation section? Any other comments for the document?
I just wanted to, could you scroll down just a little so I can see the permission? Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I, I have a question about this based on, Member Goldman, the example you gave earlier. Because what we're doing here is we're saying the need for this exemption accommodation is permanent. This exemption accommodation is temporary, but we don't give another option, which is that the exemption is for part of the day. Like, there are certain times of the day when, when they can mask, but then there are times of the day when they shouldn't, and I wonder if there's a need for us to put that in.
Well, so I wonder, because it's an accommodation, if they're masking for part of the day and not for the other part of the day, that's an accommodation.
I guess, okay, that's true, so, and it can be a permanent accommodation for part of the day. I guess I just want to make it clear that we're not necessarily saying. You, you never wear a mask just because you need to take it off when you have these services.
Member Gacy?
I like that idea of having a partial accommodation, cuz, you know, it, it just gives. A little bit more of a fine tooth.
How do you want to say it?
This need for exemption accommodation. Is for. The following parts of the school day with a line.
Any other comments on this?
Maybe, maybe. That line in green that we just created. Needs to go first, then followed by this exemption is temporary, or wait. First you put based on the nature. That, the permanent and temporary stuff go below the following part of the day, it just gets moved down. The following part of the day, it just gets moved down.
Any other discussion on this section? Any additional discussion on any parts of this document? Member Gacy.
So my question is, we've done a pretty good job going through this. We've got a few areas. That need to be confirmed. We wanted to do the Leila. Part about on, on this um, consulting with her on the wording and um. How we should do that disability in this section number two. We need to um. Get feedback from Lisa about classroom policies after exposure. And was there anything else that we, I think those were the main two. That still had yet to be decided on. So how do we vote for that? And. Can we vote for it using um. With caveats that. It'll be written in the, the findings from those two questions from the Shack.
Member Levy.
Uh, I could make an attempt to answer, but I actually have a different question. Um, my understanding is that yes, that, that we can keep these things in. And then just say we're gonna amend them once we've had the input from the folks, knowing that those amendments are coming. But um. My question, I don't know if that's actually true. But my question is actually that, so this is supposedly our second reading of this policy. But what we've done is made significant changes. And typically, the reason we have a first reading and then a second reading is so that folks in the public can weigh in between readings. And my concern is that. You know, obviously we've heard from some folks from the community, but we've heard from a very small. Number of folks from the community. And I guess my concern is that we've really changed this. And we're gonna potentially vote on it without any potential for input from the community now. And while I know we need a policy for the start of school, I guess it's a question of process. Is it wise for us to do a third reading? Or to say we're gonna put this out there for the community to read and, and be able to comment on before we enact it as policy?
Thank you. Member Miller.
Two things. First of all, I was just gonna add to member Gacy's list that we were also waiting to. Um, identify wastewater testing as well as there was a percentage we were looking at. Uh, anyway, I was just gonna add those. Secondly, I was now gonna comment on member Levy's. Um, remark, which is that I do think we should put this out for. Uh, public comment and public reading. And then I think we have to do a third re, a third, you know, confirmation vote.
Thank you. Member, uh, Sarah F Cox.
Um, well, I was. I mean, member uh, Miller's uh, and member. Levy's uh, comments about wanting more of. Public comment came after I had raised my hand. What I was. Going to say, ask is if books were ready for a motion and that my motion would be to pass the. The policy as written with the understanding that we are waiting for this additional. Information and that we would get an update about the progress at our next meeting. And any changes that need to be made to the policy at that time.
So the policy will be on the, uh, next agenda. And our next meeting is on September eighth, so it's very close to the beginning of the.
I think, I think my, I think my question. I wonder, uh, Superintendent Pearson Campbell, um, do you have an, an opinion about this question? Like, how important would it be for this to be in place for the first day of school?
Would like to have it the first day of school and then maybe put, they would amend it on September eighth. So that parents know what's expected of them. Cause I think it's safety and health and just giving people some understanding on the first day of school. But that's what I would like, but.
Yeah.
It might, it might not happen, but I, I would like that.
So, so then I would like to make that as a motion then. I would like to move that we approve the policy as written. And that at, with the understanding that we are waiting for some specific pieces of information. And that we have an update at our September eighth meeting about the status of those questions. And any needed changes uh, that might be needed for the policy.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that with a bit of a friendly amendment, which is that in addition to getting those updates. We also welcome public. Comment. Um, and. I guess we can't make a promise that it would go back to the committee, but that there's the possibility that change. I don't, I don't want to be too wishy washy, but I do think the public needs to be able to weigh in.
Yeah, I, I, um, okay, so, um. I, I, I'm not accepting everything that you just said, but maybe let me rephrase my, my, um. Let me walk away from the dishes that are being done. Um. So that the, that the motion would be to approve the policy as written. With the knowledge that we are waiting for uh, further information on some specific questions. And will welcome. Public com, you know, um. Comments from the public uh, in the intervening time and that it will be on the agenda on September eighth for. Potential uh, updates. I'm sorry, that was actually not as.
That was good.
Pithy as I had wanted.
Member Gacy.
Um. I like that. Um, how are we going to flag the areas that we are pending? Are we gonna just put? A little. italic sized section on those two, on those things? I'm not sure about the percentage that uh, member Miller. Um. Mentioned, because I thought that we decided not to go with a specifics. Percentage.
I think you're right.
But those other two sections.
Right, correct.
Okay, so how will you um. How do we document in this document? The pending sections or the uh, updates, pending dates.
One of them is already highlighted. It says, like, you know. I, I forget exactly how it was worded in that section about the um. The section that uh, Lisa Safran is gonna get back to us on. So I think that, that similar language.
Okay.
Member Davis.
Thanks. Um, I, um. I like this idea of voting tonight pending. These changes and that this additional information and to. Um. Put out there that, or, or notify whatever the proper word is, that we're, you know, accepting um. Comments and yet. There's something, I'm not sure what the right word is. It seems less than. Like if I, if I had input, if I'm a, I'm a member of the community and I have input from uh, about this document. It's already been voted on. Um. But I've been reassured that we honestly will have a look at this document at the next meeting. I'm just thinking like what reassurance would I have that, that we're really. We're gonna dive back in it and make some changes? Do you see what I'm, I'm, you know, I'm making any sense? Like if I were listening to this and I have trouble with something. But I've sat through this whole meeting and heard the committee hash it out. And work really hard on making nice sentences and then voted on it. Are we as a committee really? Acting like we're open to somebody's difference of opinion about it. Um. I just don't know what message that. Sends. On the other hand, I really want, I really was hoping to, I think it's really important that we. Let the community weigh in, although we ha, all have gotten. Correspondence certainly over these weeks. You know. Is there a point, I mean, uh, member Levy brought this up about public comment. You know, is there a point to be made that we all have gotten? Lots of not, well, input, I don't know about lots of. Some over these many months. I'm just putting that out there. I was just thinking about. The order of events. What's the best thing to do?
Thank you. Uh, Superintendent Pearson Campbell.
Guess my message will be, we want to be thoughtful of having a policy in place. And we understand the time limitation is of essence, the school starts in two weeks. And maybe we could put like our, our school committee agenda saying on September eighth. We would reopen the conversation again, but we just want to have something in place the first day of school. Because COVID will change. We know that is, that's just part of COVID. But we at least want to be thoughtful about it so that people have something in their hands on September first. I just, I just know the community will want something in place. That's, that's just from my experience being here for a month.
Thank you. Member Robbins.
I just, I was just laughing about what you just said, Dr. Pearson Campbell. It's my experience of being here for a month. I can only imagine. But yeah, hang in there. Um. I, I really appreciate what member Davis just said, which is um. I absolutely appreciate this entire conversation. I admire my colleagues enormously. Um, member Goldman, you are a terrific facilitator. Thank you so much. But um, we have represented to the large extent, I feel, um, one part of that conversation. And we have many constituents who have a completely different view of what a masking policy should be, and they are not represented in this. So I, I, I hear what member Davis is saying. If we open this up again. To saying, we're gonna listen to what you say, but we already know what we're gonna do. Um, I think that's dishonest and I, I'm not gonna vote for it tonight. And I'm not gonna not vote for it because I don't think it's a good policy. I'm not gonna vote for it because of the on and off ramps. Um, and I think I made that clear earlier. I feel very strongly that we are not thinking about taking care of the people that we need to take care of. In this policy. And I can understand all the other mitigating factors that make that a challenge to do, but I don't think we've done it. So it's a hard thing to do. We're breaking ground. I don't know any other district that's wrestled with it the way that we have. And I admire all of us for continuing to go down to the mat and continue to talk about it. Um, but I do want to have that reservation that member Davis um. Raised, which is if we invite public comment, we already know what it will be. And I think that largely what I've heard today was an acquiescence for what I think Desi also heard. And that's what we're gonna do. So um, let's be honest about it and carry through with what we said we're gonna do. Or let's be open to honoring if there might be changes in difference of opinion. Thank you.
Member Gacy.
Um. I'm ready to vote for this as is. I think that we have been. Receiving comments on our masking policy for months. Um, in fact, a year it's been going on and we've been taking them. And I think that this committee has done. A pretty good job trying to hew to the latest um. Policy guidelines from Desi and Mass Public Health and the CDC. And. I'm ready to vote for it. I don't think it's. You know, if there's a big outcry, I think that'll come in and of itself and, you know, let us know that. Maybe we need to comment, but I would love to have it passed with those two conditional parts. And get this done and, and live with it for a little bit and see how it goes.
Member Miller.
Um, I just, I appreciate what the superintendent says, said. Because I, I actually do feel like um. Some of my thoughts about this have been affected by the voices we've heard from the community. And that's why I actually was very concerned that we have a very clear um. Uh, form that can go out so that people can get accommodations. Because I have heard from constituents about how important that is. So I, I'm ready to vote also, but I do agree with um. Member Davis that we really need to get the public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further comments for the discussion on this motion? Very well. Annie, will you please call the roll?
Member Gacy. Yes. Member Sarah F Cox.
Yes.
Member Stein is no longer with us. Member Levy.
Yes.
Member Miller.
Yes.
Member Goldman.
Yes.
Member Agna.
Yes.
Member Davis.
Yes.
And member Robbins.
No.
Vote is eight in favor.
Thank you. Uh, that's the last agenda item on our agenda for this evening. And so I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Annie, please call the roll. Oh, member Levy.
Thanks, sorry. I just wanted to note that um, the superintendent evaluation subcommittee was thinking that maybe this meeting would end by eight. And then we would fit our meeting in after that. And I just want to name that I think we need to find another date and time.
Doesn't that have to be an open meeting?
Uh, it is an open meeting.
We are in an open meeting right now.
What, oh, so it can be on the agenda even though it's not on the agenda?
We, we posted a separate agenda for it. It was posted.
I, I looked for it and I didn't see it.
It was posted.
Okay, so I'm, I'm actually, I, I know we want to rush out and do whatever, but I'm gonna quickly say it would be so helpful if we, as a school committee. Could also be CC'd when stuff gets posted for subcommittees. It would be awesome.
I, I, what I usually do is put it, uh, everything in the school calendar and you can always find everything in the um, city calendar. Please keep in mind that I'm supposed to be only working four hours a day, four days a week for the next two weeks, but it's not. I haven't done that today and it's not possible to get this job done at four hours.
I do understand that. I'm, I'm thinking forward to what would be great for communication. Thank you, Annie.
Well, I think, um, I think it, the better way to do it, it, yeah, I guess maybe I should just include the whole committee in every single agenda that gets posted. Was that be something that everybody would like?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I'm happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Annie.
Do you like me to call the roll Twitter?
Yes, please.
Member Sarah F Cox.
Yes.
Member Levy.
Yes.
Member Miller.
Yes.
Member Goldman.
Yes.
Member Agna.
Yes.
Member Davis.
Oh, yes.
Member Robbins.
Yes.
And member Gacy.
Yes.
And you adjourn 9:55.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Good night.
So we'll, we'll reschedule.
Do I need?
Nope.
So I was just thinking announcing the upcoming meetings.
Uh, that usually happens just in the regular school committee meeting.
Yes, okay, great.
Don't have to do it in every special school committee, but do I still have member Levy here? I do not. Uh, just, we will be rescheduling this.
Okay.
So thank you all.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Thanks, Kaya.
Of course. Thank you, Annie.